Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. Please join the board in the Pledge to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Canty, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is happening in a hybrid format. Members of the public are invited to attend this meeting in person at Town Hall at 26 Court Street or to attend virtually via the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public may also watch this meeting over PAC TV's broadcast channels on Comcast Channel 9, Verizon Channel 47, or at PAC TV's website. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting remotely may do so using the Zoom webinar link that is provided on the posted agenda that is on the Town website.
Thank you, Mr. Canty. First order of business tonight is the Item Agenda, Age and Dementia Friendly Plymouth. Michelle Braddy, Commissioner of Health and Human Services, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much, honestly, to the Select Board, to our Town Manager, to our Senior Task Force, who are here en masse, rooting us on. We appreciate this opportunity. This is our opportunity, almost a little over a year later, to present to you, the Senior Task Force and the Select Board, both had an agenda and a goal for Plymouth to become an age and dementia-friendly community. Guess what? We're almost there. So tonight, it is my distinct honor to show you this presentation, put together by UMass Gerontology Association, and they are amazing. They've done a year-and-a-half study of the town of Plymouth, what Plymouth needs, what the residents have said, what we want. Essentially, this is it. You know what? Plymouth residents love their town, and they want to stay here. That's aging in place. That's aging, and that's exactly what we intend to do for our residents. So I'm going to give you a little bit of start, and then I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin. Let's see, okay. So acknowledgements, and this is from all of us, but we've truly, you know, it was very kind of Caitlin to acknowledge myself and the Plymouth Senior Task Force. And again, I thank them for being here tonight. They have worked tirelessly on this project, along with UMass. So thank you for being here. Pat, I'm not hearing any woo-woo-woo with the clap. Thank you. We had this planned. I mean, this was all scripted out and everything, and, you know, there's no woo-woo, so thank you. We truly do want to thank the Plymouth Select Board and Plymouth Town Meeting members and all the stakeholders and residents who took the time to participate in interviews, forums, focus groups, and the actual survey that was done. Building an age and dementia-friendly Plymouth. What, why? Why are we doing this? What's the purpose? Well, when you look at an age and dementia-friendly Plymouth, you look at a few key factors. And basically, what happened is in 2023, a needs assessment was commissioned by the town of Plymouth to identify and plan for the needs and interests of Plymouth residents. They want to live here. We have a large and growing population of older adults, and the demographics are shifting and evolving, as always. This is the Senior Task Force, and we came together to make this our criteria. We're looking at the strengths and challenges of aging in Plymouth. Building an age and dementia-friendly Plymouth. What did that take? Oh, my gosh, look at everything that was done. There was a demographic profile, six key informant interviews, four community forums, four focus groups, 75, 85, 100 participants. What you should know about this town of Plymouth and residents, be so very proud. It was a 39% community survey response rate. UMass tells us that typically, if they reach in the 20s, that's success. 39% for this town. So this was, how do we do this? Just a quick overview, guiding an age and dementia-friendly framework. This was developed by the World Health Organization, and both initiatives draw on multi-sectoral collaborations and community engagement. Age-friendly is a community where people participate, are connected, remain healthy and active, and feel like they belong, no matter their age or their ability. A dementia-friendly community promotes awareness of dementia. Supercritical, we have BID right in our backyard, it's important that we understand dementia. It's sadly prevalent. There are nine domains, and I'm going to have Caitlin go into some of the findings. I know we're pressed for time tonight, and I want to make sure that you understand exactly what our residents have said. So without further ado, Caitlin Coyle, UMass Gerontology Institute.
Thanks, Michelle, and thanks to the Senior Task Force. Before I get into the details of the results, I just wanted to comment that I have the honor of doing this kind of work with a lot of communities across Massachusetts, and very occasionally, I find a community that is so organized, so dedicated, so friendly, so fun to work with as the Senior Task Force. You guys have a real gem here in terms of residents and stakeholders coming together to lead this work, and I just wanted to make sure to comment on that because I think from an outsider's perspective, it's important, the success of this work is contingent largely on the leadership and the collaboration, which is clearly in place. Okay. So I'm going to, Michelle went over the sort of what we did in Plymouth over the last year or so. What you're going to see tonight is just kind of hitting the highlights of some of the findings, and it is a synthesis, you know, information that's been synthesized across the data sources that she highlighted. The first graphs that you see here, one is about the population, the age distribution of the population here in Plymouth. What you see is, looking back to 2010, and then the 2020 decennial census, and looking out to projections of 2030. What's important to note is that as of the 2020 decennial census, you had about 31% of your community identifying as being aged 60 and older, which is how here in the US we define an older American. And then that is projected to increase to about 37% by the year 2030. That's a significant, so you see the main growth in Plymouth is actually happening in that older adult segment. And that's relevant also because you have, the second figure that you see there is about survey respondents and how long, how important it is for them to live in Plymouth by age. And we also see, we hear that there's a lot of, we, survey respondents also identified as being relative newcomers. So you have people who've been in Plymouth for less than a few years compared to people who've been here their whole life, and for most, almost half, more than half of all of them across age groups, it's very important for them to stay. So as Michelle said, people want to stay in this community, people are coming to this community to age, and that's contributing to the age, the shift in the demographics around age in particular. So we, in the survey and also on focus groups, we reviewed all of the qualitative information. We categorized it by theme, we reviewed, and we came up with the top four or five responses that were most commonly articulated by residents. When we asked about what they love about their community, the top values include the availability of outdoor spaces, the proximity to amenities, the people and sense of community, and the safety of the community. And what you see around this slide is direct quotes from residents who, in their own words, described some of these values. Similarly, we asked about people's concerns about their ability to age in Plymouth as they get older. The top concern, perhaps not surprising, is affordability. And that fell into two sort of sub areas. One is general cost of living, and the second is specifically around taxes and housing. The second top concern was transportation, and the third top concern is being able to live independently and maintaining their health and function. Again, quotes from, direct quotes from residents articulating this, these issues. Looking a little bit more specifically about financial security, what you see on the left is based on 2021 American Community Survey data. That's the median household income for householders who are between the ages of 45 to 64 compared to those who are 65 and older. And so what you see is a pretty, pretty significant disparity there in terms of median household income. Of course, that is driven largely by the fact that a lot of people 65-plus are no longer in the workforce, so their income has decreased because of that. But then when we look more specifically at people living alone, we see even further disparities with respect to income, and that highlights this idea that as people age, this, this income security issue becomes, really makes them sort of vulnerable to other issues as well. We asked our survey respondents whether or not in the last year they've worried about being able to afford basic costs. And what you see there is the results, so about 46% of survey respondents said that they worried about being able to afford basic home maintenance, paying for utilities, access to dental care, paying for prescription drugs, and paying rent or mortgage. And I think this is, I highlight this in part because I think something that we know happens a lot is that because of the, the median household income being low and because of fixed incomes and rising costs of living, older adults in particular are forced to make decisions about how they spend their, their limited income, which can make things like home maintenance, utilities, dental care, prescriptions harder to obtain. And so it's not just a matter of they don't have enough money, it's that they're having to decide how they're spending their dollars in terms of some pretty significant services that they need. In terms of housing, we asked about whether their current residence has first-floor living. Thirty-two, about a third of the respondents said that no, their house does not have first-floor living, which is a proxy for age-friendly housing, suggesting that they would need to make modifications to their home to be able to live on one floor. Of those who said they needed home modifications, 13% said they cannot afford to make them. And when we asked about preference for future housing, smaller dwellings and properties with amenities, including 55-plus communities, are most preferred. Transportation, what you see there is the rates of driving status across age groups. So for example, you see that 15% of those 80 and over say they do not drive at all, and 24% of those 80 and older say that they drive, but they limit their driving in some way. For example, they don't drive at night, they don't drive on highways, et cetera. Of people who said they don't drive, 30% said that they missed, canceled, or rescheduled a medical appointment in the past year because of a lack of transportation. So we heard transportation loud and clear is one of the top concerns for people being able to stay here and age well, and that's even more of a concern for people who limit their driving or don't drive at all, and that disproportionately affects folks in the older old categories. We asked about a number of sort of key features of outdoor spaces in Plymouth as far as thinking about the age and dementia-friendly nature of those features, and what we see is that the things that people are most dissatisfied with are affordability, availability of parking, ease of parking, and conveniently located public restrooms. That was reported by about half of the respondents, saying that they were dissatisfied or very dissatisfied with these features. We also heard from key informants and focus group participants about things like the lack of handicap parking spots, color contrast of crosswalk markings, limited sidewalks overall, and the opportunity to activate some of the local spaces for more age, universal age equipment, and sort of thinking about ways to make existing outdoor spaces more age-friendly. We heard a lot about, the survey respondents, about half of them said that they've provided care or are providing care to someone who needs help currently or in the last few years. That's a significant share of your population, that, and the, and the main reasons for doing that are mobility impairment, chronic diseases, and Alzheimer's and dementia.
Sorry, I just want to point out, thanks Caitlin. When you look at that first statistic, 50 to 59-year-old, 53% have cared or caring for someone. We call that the sandwich generation, so you know, 50, 50 to 59 may be caring for children and caring for their parents. So they're right in the, in the middle of having a lot of stress in regards to caregiving needs. When we think of caregivers, we really need to understand that in our community and understand what that looks like. Most people don't realize they're caretakers. You know, you go help your mom or dad, you know, buy, go to the grocery store and get a prescription. You're helping your kid with homework. You're doing this. If you added all of that up and how your caregiving for your loved ones, it's really impactful, and we need to make sure that we focus on that.
Yes, and among those who said they were providing care, we asked about how difficult it was for them to do this and maintain their daily responsibilities to illustrate more of what Michelle just mentioned, especially for those in their 50s. You know, almost three-quarters of them say that it was very challenging or somewhat challenging to provide this care and maintain their daily responsibilities. So we wonder why they're not coming to the Cal or doing other things, and it's likely because they're quite busy dealing with some of these issues. We did hear about mental health and substance misuse concerns for a portion of Plymouth's older residents. So you see the pie graph there that says that about half, no, yes, 44% say that they have been or have friends or family who have been affected by substance misuse. And they also, we heard a lot about from our qualitative work about the access and referrals to mental health counseling seem very inadequate, and the, just sort of the overall demand for those things, which I know is a concern for all age populations, but I think it's important to remember that this is also true for the older segment of your community. We talk a lot about social connection, the value of social connection in terms of people's health and longevity. We see, we ask people about how frequently they talk on the phone, get together with or send email to family, friends, and neighbors. And what I usually, I like to highlight here is sort of the, the top of those bar graphs. So people who, for example, get together with people in person monthly or less, and so that's about 20%, 20, 23% of people who say they get together with somebody monthly or, or more, less, less per year. And that's sort of how we think about sort of risk of isolation in terms of people's frequency of contact. Of course, COVID shaped a lot of that, but I think it's important to recognize that that is an issue that's really very, evidence to be very important, and also something that can be, that there's, you know, sort of risk factors for. We asked about people, about whether they know someone living within 30 minutes of their home and who they can rely for help. 14% of the sample said no. That's important because I think if we, if we wonder about, well, if they don't have someone to call, who are they going to call? Probably 911, probably your local emergency medical services to respond. We asked, there's quite a few questions about the Center for Active Living. It's beloved to people who use it. We did look at people who don't use the Cal and what kinds of things limit their participation. And what you see is that they don't, they don't need the services, so they sort of have a perception of having to have a need to participate, and they also don't know what is offered. So a signal for sort of continued education about what the Cal can offer, and also to think about sort of changing the narrative around need-based services versus services that are available to anyone. We heard about being physically, mentally, intellectually active, and how that's important for people to engage. That is the very kind of thing that the Cal does and provides. And so thinking about priorities for future service, residents said mental health counseling, information referral, and transportation are also priorities for them as far as how to expand programs and services at the Cal.
I'll just add, in terms of, again, this is an age and dementia-friendly, but it crosses all ages, so Health and Human Services, you know, we look across the spectrum. We'll be tackling issues such as these for everybody, including some of the, the factors that you've seen.
We asked about inclusion and people feeling as though their voice is being heard by local, local policymakers. The pie graph there says that about 37% of the sample said that they don't know if local policymakers consider the interests and concerns of older residents, which I think is an important thing to understand, that there's a lot of people who just aren't really aware, perhaps, of the local policymaking process and, and what's going on, and so that's of note. And that you also have about a third who disagree or strongly disagree that local policymakers consider the interests of older adults. 7% of respondents have felt excluded in Plymouth because of their age, and that was the top reason why people felt excluded in the past here in Plymouth was because of age, and you see some of the quotes from people who, who articulated some of these issues as well. We asked respondents if they know who to call in Plymouth, if, should they need help? And what you see is that significant shares of the survey respondents say no. They don't know. We also heard from key informants, they recognize that the town doesn't have a 311 program. And older residents call kind of anywhere to get information about things, and they can get frustrated with Town Hall. I know there's things that are being worked on to address that issue, but this idea of people not feeling like they know who to call in the community when they're, when they need help is a significant point. This slide just talks about the fact that, asks about preferred sources of information about what's going on in the town of Plymouth. Obviously, the, the Cal's newsletter is, for people who use the Cal, the Cal newsletter is huge for them. And the second sort of highest preferred source of communication is word of mouth, which I find both interesting and also not so surprising. I think we're all sort of inundated with communication coming from all over the place, and just reminder of the significance of someone stopping to actually tell you about what's going on or even better inviting you to participate. So we end with just a few potential actions. I'm going to probably stop there and just see if, well, I'll run through them briefly, but, and then see if anyone has any questions. So in the full report, we make specific recommendations around all of the domains of age and dementia-friendly, and here is just sort of a smattering of some of those recommendations around housing. We're talking about continuing to advocate for accessory dwelling unit, dwelling unit zoning permissions, thinking about ways to offset costs of home repair and modifications, and expand property tax relief, thinking about the walkability of the community, and distributing information about public restrooms. Again, trying to target transportation resources towards those people who limit their driving or don't drive at all, thinking about on-demand ride services for folks in and around Plymouth. And also thinking about how do we improve communication, because ultimately, a lot of this hinges on whether or not people know about what's available to them. We've got some ideas around how to connect people with sort of their neighbor-to-neighbor type programs, how do we sort of strengthen the fabric of the community, knowing that people love Plymouth in part because of the sense of community? How do we activate that in ways that can support people as they age? Thinking about, you know, you all know sort of the geographic limitations of Plymouth. We heard a lot about this idea of having, in each village, having a hub of some kind of information station or physical space where people can hyper-locally gather. And then in terms of respect and inclusion, thinking about engaging the Chamber of Commerce and local businesses to establish an age and dementia-friendly business designation, so the businesses and restaurants are welcoming places for people who are older and living with dementia. Civic, Citizen Civic Academy, thinking about creating a job or volunteer fair, trying to engage people. There's a lot of capacity for volunteerism and civic engagement. It does require cultivation and maintenance and management, but it is a huge resource here in Plymouth that could be tapped further. So with that, I will stop. Happy to take questions, comments, reactions. Thanks. I rapid-fired that, so hopefully you absorbed at least a little bit.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I, I have one. On one of your recommendations, it was to expand, and without looking at it, property tax relief. How would your community go about doing that?
Yeah, so you can either expand the eligibility criteria so that more people are income-eligible to participate in that. You can also expand the number of slots that are available for a community in terms of, I think, you can also increase the maximum. I think the state limit right now is $1,500 in terms of the maximum amount you can get back on your taxes, but you could think about expanding the number of, of spots that are available to your community members.
Because as a footnote, I, I know we just did this, a meeting or two ago, and we set it up annually, but is it above that certain amount? I mean, I guess that's my question. If we're at the 1,500, is that as high as we can offer the relief?
My understanding is that is the state limit at the, at the moment is 1,500.
We're at the limit, I believe, right? Okay. Thank you.
And also just awareness of that program. I think making people, making sure you're filling all the slots you have is also something that can be helpful.
Yeah, maybe we could do, do something in a future mail, and I know everybody cringes when I say that, but when they do the tax bills, maybe we could have a little something in there so people aren't aware of it or the circuit breaker, if you will. Because I've, you know, mentioned that to a number of seniors myself, and it has helped out, and they didn't know nothing about it, so.
Right.
Anything like that that you might have going forward, give us a little time and say if we can't get it in there so everybody gets the information. And I know Charlie wants to, and Harry.
First of all, I want to, Michelle, I want to thank you, Caitlin and, Caitlin, your words about the committee, and we already knew that. That's, that's a, a great group of people that we have. We have Plymouth, we are so lucky with the, the great volunteerism we have, the professional people that really, we care about Plymouth. And, and I'm including everybody up here too, because we're volunteers too, for the most part, but, so I want to thank you. I have a question, because I, you know, as I'm getting older, I have home repairs and how do we make this, how do we make it more affordable? I saw that as, you know, one of the, one of the, and it's, it is a real need because as people get older, their incomes get less, but the cost of repairs get higher. So how do we, do you have, do you have any kind of a plan?
I can offer some ideas about how to do that. I think in part, in addition to the cost of home repair, it's also about being able to find trustworthy repair. And, and being, just being able to figure out who could do this work. And so that is a kind of a side issue to the affordability, but I think that's a place where, you know, the Cal and others can think about how they can connect people with resources that are sort of trusted in some way. But I think as far as the affordability, you know, trying to connect, you could think about cultivating sort of like handyman programs, like, meaning it doesn't have to be a, sometimes it doesn't have to be a contractor or a full licensed construction company that needs to do a small home repair for someone.
Fixing a faucet.
Fixing a faucet, replacing a light, you know, lights, things like that. So thinking about how do we activate people who have the skills to do that, maybe retirees, et cetera. Some communities, I think, have thought about trying to like incentivize some of their local contractors to do work for lower cost and offer subsidies. Some of the fraternal organizations have raised money to have sort of a, a community grant program or a pot of money that if people need something, that they could offset the cost in that way, too.
And some of the, some of the things that you're talking about, we've already gotten proactive and trying to do some of those things. The transportation is interesting, you know, between GATRA and the rides, and, I mean, I see it other communities, you know, I go to Weymouth for my doctor's appointments, and I see the rides, every other, every other van is coming in and dropping off and picking people up, and they're all seniors, and is that something we can work on? And also, here's another summary suggested. It was one of the residents down in Red Brook, which is one of our new active, active villages, and they, they were trying to encourage, because of that new project that's going in down there with the senior handicap accessible, uh, uh, project going down there, that this particular person said that there's, you can have handicapped seniors there with no transportation. And she was suggesting that why can't we get somebody, whether it's the developer, it would probably have to be Red Brook AD Makepeace. She, this was her suggestion, not mine, to come up and maybe provide a couple of handicap-accessible vans and maybe donate them to the, to the Cal. But again, there's a couple of things. Then we have to hire drivers. I know there's a lot of negatives, and, and Cal is not a transportation center, so I'm sure there's negatives, but why can't we, can we get private developers to put funds towards transportation? That's just something that I just want to throw.
I've heard and seen it done in other communities.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
More of a, a public-private, yeah, so, okay.
I think the, the point is, and, you know, excellent question, Charlie, it, the sky's the limit. We really are a community that wants to come together and, and problem-solve some of these issues in very creative ways. You know, the Cal created the Cal Express in partnership with GATRA to have seniors transported to and from the center free of charge. Went for a grant and got that. GATRA On Demand actually does go to Red Brook and has fully ADA-accessible vehicles. So there are some, I think, part of it is, and one of the things that was captured was communication and information. So if we can streamline, we have a lot of great resources already. It's probably getting that out to the public and getting it out accurately. So that's what we're working on as well.
So awareness is a big thing. Aware, people have to be aware of what's out there, services that are already out there and are great. there, and a great, great job. Thank you.
Mr. Helm? Michelle, would you please, I've been involved with this group from the very, very, very beginning, so I know that this report tonight is not the end.
Correct.
And that solving problems is not going to occur at this meeting. Would you please outline for everybody what the purpose of this group was, this report, and where this group goes to now, from now, and what the age and dementia-friendly designation means for the town and solving the problems?
Certainly. Happy to. So this was born out of a conversation between myself and Mr. Helm, basically not looking to put Band-Aids on senior and issues of people looking to age and stay in our community. Hence, Senior Task Force was born to create a blueprint of solutions, a sustainable fabric in our community where we have the resources, needs, and all residents feel included. From that, Senior Task Force was created, and our mission, we looked at age and dementia-friendly and said, this designation covers everything that we're trying to do. So in pursuing this designation, today you have the data. You kindly, and Fall Town Meeting last year kindly gave us the funding to do this important in-depth research. This is just the beginning. This gives us the tools to say, what do our residents need and what do they want? We have that now. Now the action, the roll-up-the-sleeves happens. So now what happens from here is we'll take this information and develop an action plan. Prior to that action plan, we are going to formally ask the Select Board to endorse Plymouth becoming an age and dementia-friendly designation. You did put that in your goals, so I know that you support this. The process to become an age and dementia-friendly designation from the state requires the Select Board to physically, literally, formally sign off on some pieces of paper that I will share with you. So I will need a vote on that to endorse Plymouth becoming an age and dementia-friendly community. And then once that happens, these amazing people right here sitting, volunteering their time, start to look at this data and say, you know what? We have some great resource, we have amazing resources right in this town. How are we going to harness that and tap that? Becoming an age and dementia-friendly community opens so many grant opportunities. We want to become that in Plymouth, because we want to be the best, we already are the best town in the Commonwealth. We want to be the best town for our residents. We need money. We're not going to turn to the budget every time. We're going to look for grants that empower residents and give the strength and tools they need to want to stay, and more importantly, to be able to stay. That's what we're going to do.
Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Canty?
Michelle, it wasn't, probably wasn't until about 15 years ago where I, I realized how important it was. As I watched my mother age, the single level living, you mentioned that up there and how important that is. And I've seen other people have to leave their homes early, because they lived in a, like a split-level ranch. They were aging, and you come into a house and you have to either go up or down, but I knew how fortunate she was with her setup where she could still do stairs, but everything was on the first floor, washer, dryer, kitchen, bedroom, and bathroom. So that variable, has that triggered anything at the state level? I think we know how the current administration is with respect to forcing certain things down communities' throats, but is that a discussion that, I mean, are they trying to, like incentivize developers to only build one-level structures for seniors? Do you see any of that?
I can speak, I don't know about the state level, but I know, for example, in the city of Boston, they've updated their guidelines and criteria for developers about what constitutes universal design to specifically include some age and dementia-friendly features of that space. It's not a requirement necessarily, but it is part of like the recommendations for how developers get approved to do projects in the city of Boston, and I would imagine that something similar to that's happening elsewhere, but I haven't seen anything statewide.
Okay.
Exactly what I was going to say, you know, ADA accessible is super important. We already have that, right? We understand that language. Caitlin used a great term, universal building. We're going to dive into that and look at ways in which we can, we're not the builders, but ways in which we can maybe advise our community about what would be prudent for everybody involved.
Thank you.
So, Michelle, and thank you for the presentation and the work. I have parents that are senior citizens in West Plymouth. My mom is definitely a caretaker, takes care of my dad, who has some health concerns. I help out when I can, but I wouldn't consider myself to rise to the level of being a caretaker in the same capacity as my mom, but I know that, you know, they're interested in staying in place. There are challenges involved in that, particularly because as a wider society beyond the confines of Plymouth or Massachusetts, we've made some decisions that pass a lot of the costs of late-stage living on to individuals and their capacity to pay as opposed to in some other countries or areas that have made different decisions in that regard, which has made it easier for people to live there in longer terms. But that's a wider choice and decision that, beyond the scopes of Plymouth. But I do appreciate bringing up these types of issues, because I know with the large population that we have in Plymouth, that is over 55, over, it looked like there was a very significant number of people over the age of 45, all of whom are going in the same direction as well. I think it's very important. Are you, in terms of the vote that you needed, and do you need that tonight, or is that something you want later?
There is no time like the present. I would love it tonight, please.
Okay. If there's no other discussion from my colleagues, I would make a motion that we support Plymouth becoming an age and dementia-friendly community at this time.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Mr. Blitzer?
It's my pleasure to vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Of course, yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Michelle, if I may, it's not related to this, but you may be able to help me. I had a call Sunday from a senior resident who I'm going to speak with tomorrow, who is about to lose her, her house in one of the mobile parks. And I know there's a wait on housing. Who am I going to reach out to after I speak with her tomorrow? Ask her to call, so try to get some help. I'm going to help her, myself personally, but, I mean, that's, you know, I don't know all the issues, so.
You're going to reach out to Cal or have her reach out directly to our social outreach workers who will assist her?
Thank you. Next thing on the docket is a public hearing. Aquaculture license. Mr. Hunter, Arbor Master, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the introduction. Tonight, we're here for really a modification for Dawn Wilkinson and Sean Withington. They've had, they both have 3.75-acre aquaculture leases, and they were, if you remember back to 2010, some of the first aquaculture sites that we issued here in Plymouth. So they, they were the impetus for the aquaculture movement. Some of the reasons, Dawn had provided a letter in his packet, and I've spoken with them a number of times over the years. Their existing leases are in pretty high-energy environments, a lot of tide movement. We've seen an increase in the frequency and intensity of storms, so it prevents them really from doing bottom culture, which is when you take the oyster and you put it on the mud flat versus keeping it in a cage. So for those reasons, they're looking to give up part of their existing sites to have two, right around two acres apiece in a calmer location where they can do bottom culture of oysters. So something obviously that myself and, as the Arbor Master and the Shellfish Constable support. I know they've tried a number of different methods. I think Dawn's pretty much done just about every method there is to, as he sort of progressed over the years. And the nice part about bottom culture is really there's no gear present on the site itself. So as you look out over the water, this looks really natural. You're not even going to see oysters sitting in the mud from afar. So as far as the visual impact and the impact to navigation or any sort of creatures that exist, it's very minimal. It's kind of almost in its natural state, so also something that we support. So one thing to point out, both requests have the same coordinates, so they have provided us a box, a larger space. Marine Fisheries, after this hearing, will have to go out and do, conduct a survey, and they will determine whether or not that area is suitable for aquaculture. So they wanted a little bit of flexibility to have DMF survey a larger area and then come back to the board for the smaller two-acre parcels, once they find out from them what's available out of that box. So this is kind of the start. Next step for them would be to get DMF out to survey, and ultimately, that will tell them what they can and can't use. So I think Sean Withington wasn't able to make it tonight. Dawn Wilkinson is here. If you had any questions about his operations or why he's, has this request, I think he'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions from the board members for Mr. Hunter or the applicant? Seeing none. Pleasure of the board.
Make a motion that we approve the aquaculture license change?
Second?
That's both of them.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion? Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the licenses and the six administrative notes. Any questions or requests from the board? If not, your pleasure, gentlemen.
I move we vote on the licenses and the administrative notes as a group. Second?
Motion by Mr. Helm, second by Mr. Canty. Discussion on either? Seeing none. Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous. Upper Playground Upgrades. Nick Fialla?
Welcome.
Is the green light on?
I always got to do something awkward in the beginning. Good evening, Nick Fialla, Parks and Forestry Superintendent. Thank you all for your time. I do have with me Joe Dufour of Emmy O'Brien as well. Joe and his team have built all of the playgrounds and the parks here in Plymouth over the past 30 years. Tonight, I am requesting $247,000 in ARPA funds. This request is to address, we, well, we had an audit back last season on all of our playgrounds, so this would address all of the recommendations through that audit. I did prepare a narrated PowerPoint, and Jenny, if you don't mind playing that, I don't know if the audio, oh, I don't know how to do this. I recorded audio, too. Is there a way to start it from the beginning, or do I have to? Okay.
Come on, Vienna, I know you can do it.
We'll do it live. So introducing Town of Plymouth Public Playgrounds. Here's a list of all the park playgrounds throughout town. The auditing company went to each of those. They inspected everything from safety zones, surfacing, to every nut and bolt in all of these playgrounds, except for Allerton and Stevens. And it was over a 400-page report that they returned to us, so I streamlined it here in a five-minute slideshow. Veterans Memorial Playground Upgrades include replacement of swing set, so this is going to be the entire swing set area, moving of the existing border to meet safety zone requirements, installation of wood fiber safety surfacing, and replacement of various hardware panels and playground components. This is one of the more costly because of the complete replacement of the swing set. Oh, it's moving on its own now. West Plymouth Recreation Facility Upgrades include replacement of various worn hardware throughout the playground. Syracuse Memorial Playground Upgrades to this location include replacement of playground equipment, including a ladder, transfer module railings, and various hardware to remove and reset areas of the existing border, including replacement of 12 PT timbers, and to supply and install sand safety surfacing. This would also include a new ADA walkway coming from the entrance that would approximately be 50 feet by 5 feet and made of asphalt. Seaver Field, this would include hardware and part replacements for the airplane component, the balance beam, the safety fun piece, sway fun piece, and the climber wall. Nelson Memorial Park Upgrades include repairs to the swing set, the bongo drum and periscope parts, the ABC climber, and the touch-up of OEM paint. And if anyone has questions at the end of what any of these components are, again, Joe's here to answer to that. Metamath Recreation Area Upgrades include installation of warning signs. Unfortunately, they were removed due to vandalism. miscellaneous hardware replacement and installation of a small ADA walkway coming off of the handicap spot just in the parking lot there. Hedges Pond Recreation Area Upgrades include replacement of various panels, hardware, and OEM paint touch-up, installation of wood fiber safety surfacing, which is currently what's there, but this would just be replenishing. Huntley Playground, so Huntley Playground's located, it's our furthest playground away from here. You actually have to drive through Buttermilk Bay to get to this part of Plymouth, so it's often forgot about. We go down at least dozen times a year to paint over vandalism or replace any hardware that we're able to replace ourselves, but this one's actually slotted on my 10-year plan for FY '27 for a complete replacement in the amount of $165,000. So however, if we made these upgrades, we may be able to stretch that a little further out. It is a charming, small playground, but these upgrades would include various deck replacements, crawl tunnel replacement, maze panel replacement, kick plate, vertical ladder, spiral slide, swing parts, and to install more sand safety surfacing. Brook Road Playground Upgrades would include replacement of the wheel feature, various panels, tunnel slide parts, and to supply and apply safety sand surfacing. Alma Raymond Park Upgrades would include replacing various hardware, OEM paint and panels, to remove and extend the PT wooden timbers to meet safety code, and then filling in that area with more port-in-place rubber surfacing to meet the new safety zones. Forges Field Playground, so when we redid this, well, we didn't redo the playground, we did do some ADA upgrades to this playground just a few years ago, but at that time, we just added the rubber surfacing to meet complacency. It wasn't a complete redo, just so you know. Upgrades include color splash parts, airplane rider parts, Upgrades Include Color Splash Parts, Airplane Rider Parts, Trolley Parts, Arch Bridge Parts, Belt Bridge Replacement. It's a long one, I know. Step Replacement, Wheel Replacement, Two of the Ladder Parts, We Saw Parts, Wire Barrier Parts, Transfer Module Parts, and Block Climber Parts. Briggs Playground. So this playground was recommended for immediate removal due to safety concerns through Playground Innovative Playground Services. So we did have to do a press release and remove that playground. Unfortunately, it was the oldest standing playground in the parks of Plymouth at the time. So with a complete replacement, what we would look to do is to keep that traditional simplistic charm of what was there before and kind of almost try to mimic exactly what was there, just new and safe. The total cost of that would be estimated at just about $54,000. Luckily, Allerton Park, we just, thanks to everybody here, this one was just redone, does not need any upgrades. And then Stevens Field coming soon, which is going to be amazing. So thank you. And I'm here to answer any questions and Joe can also help if there are any.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Nick. I had a couple of questions. I think it was Manomet Playground. There was installation of warning signs?
Yeah.
What are we cautioning the children and/or their parents about at the Manomet Playground?
So the, the warning signs or safety signs? Yeah, so, so, yeah, you might want to come up because it's recorded through here. Yeah. I'll let Joe speak to that since it's.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
The warning signs or safety signs that we're talking about, they're stickers that are on the play equipment that note the age appropriateness. So when a parent walks up to the play piece.
Okay.
They'll see that this piece of equipment is designed for ages five to 12, two to five.
Okay.
It's very typical that kids just peel them and rip them off.
Right.
We actually are now doing these signs metal that are riveted right to the play equipment.
Okay.
So the replacements that you would be getting are not the stickers anymore. They're going to be the new metal signs that are affixed right to the play equipment.
Okay.
They're standard from the manufacturer and they denote their code requirements for the playground.
Okay. Thank you. And then my other question was in regards to, I think it was the Briggs Playground?
Sure.
That one seemed, I agree, it's simplistic, but seemed like $53,000 for what was there seemed high to me. Is that just the cost of those supplies of materials at this time?
Yeah, that, that's the cost. A lot, most of the playgrounds we put in are around $300,000.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yeah, Greg, you have $247,000, but that's not a lot of money to just get all our parks in shape. And I can tell you that our Parks and Recreation are second to none in any town in the state, believe me. I, I have people that come down for Pop Warner and they come into Forges Field and that's just one example. And they can't believe that this is our recreation area. And I tell them that's only one, this is only one area. We have parks all across, all across the town. And I'll tell you, it's very, it's so important. So, you know, we have these, I always tell my wife, when you're bringing a young family into, if they want to buy a house in Plymouth, take them through Forges Field. Let them see how serious the town is about parks and recreation. So, and when Stevens Field gets, gets fixed, fixed, we're going to have Nelson on one end, Stevens on the other end, and the waterfront. I tell you, we are so lucky. And the tourists are able to use the, these, these facilities too. So it's great for our tourism. So I commend you. I have just a couple of questions on Huntley, which I didn't even know where it was to be, I'm not going to lie to you. But Huntley having a lot of problems 12 times a year going down there with graffiti and, would it be worth it to put cameras in? And what's, what's the, I'm talking when you're going to spend, when you do the whole, you're going to spend some serious money there. When you do that, would it be worth putting a security system in?
So when I say we go down there 12 times a year, there isn't vandalism all 12 of those times. We've found with putting security cameras up, most of them are SD cards or memory cards. And if we, if we wire them in, hardwire it, it'd get very, very expensive. That's certainly an option we can explore. But I think the reason that park experiences a lot of vandalism is because of its age. And I think people, you know, more teenagers go there to get out of the house and congregate. I think once we redo it, it might be more, might bring the neighborhood more together and the, and the children and everything would be using it.
Hopefully this, it doesn't become a recurring problem and happen in other areas because that would be just a shame. I don't want to see that happen. I drove by the skate park tonight and it's still in great shape and which, which is good. The last question I have is a, the dog parks. What are we doing with the dog parks? We have the money, I can believe, right?
Yeah, I can touch, I can touch on that briefly if you'd like.
I don't mean to, Harry's gonna probably.
Harry, you want me to? You want to? It's up to you.
Whatever. I just, where's the dog parks?
Do Cedarville and then we'll talk about Cedarville.
I can say Cedarville is in the works and it's happening. So, yeah.
Yeah, just to clarify, we received the Stanton Grant, which, which will fund the large, the design and the large majority. Where we have brought in, remind me the name, I, oh.
It's Weston and Sampson.
Weston and Sampson to do the design. We had a preliminary design that got us the grant. Now we're doing the formal design, which should be, we're going to get a cost estimate shortly. So we're moving forward on that and that'll be fine. We will need some of the $500,000 in ARPA money to, to finish funding that because we only get $250,000 from the Stanton Foundation. So Cedarville is all set. Forges is kind of set, but the ARPA funding that was allocated for it might be a bit problematic because of timing, because the town is, I mean, may I speak, is, is developing a master plan for Forges, for the Forges Field Parks, which from the sounds of what I've heard about it, is really going to be something. And the dog park in Forges is tied into that master plan. So the Dog Park Committee met last night to discuss this little speed bump in the Forges Field Dog Park. And we have, we're meeting again next week to come up with some creative ideas to present to the town manager, the parks and the recreation department directors. So.
Well, Harry, I was just taking a page out of your book and I wanted the people at home to, no, because they're, they're, they're wondering about it, which I am too. But great. So that's good news. Something to look forward to.
If, if I may add this, Sam, Weston and Sampson has built dog parks under the Stanton Grant. They're very familiar. And that's, other than coming highly recommended by other town staff, that's why we reached out to them and they seem very professional.
I just want to say, great job. I'm glad that you're addressing from one end of town to the other.
Thank you.
You got all portions right down at Cedarville. That's great. But I do have just one question. Next to his school is a pond with some picnic tables and some rundown fencing. I brought this up before. Is there anything slated for, not in this, but I mean, is there any plan or what's the process for getting DPW or parks to go over there? And, you know, they, they had the telephone pole, if you will, fenced in and they're broken and falling over. And the picnic tables need a lot of love. And it is a growing area of town. North Plymouth gets everything. The housing, the MBTA, and there's going to be more coming. So we need to have those recreation areas, you know. I, I realize it's not a playground. Right next to that is the Doris Pedrini Playground. And that's probably falls under the school if I'm a guest in person. But, you know, I'd like to see that park or have somebody take a look and see what we can do with that. Not park, but place to picnic.
Sure.
It'll come in handy now, especially for all the housing in that area.
Yeah, I know a couple of years back, we repaired some of those picnic tables, but they are due to be replaced. And I'll put that at the top of my list.
And you know what else too? And I don't know, it's probably the, I don't know who it is, but somebody's dumping leaves and all this stuff that, you know, I don't know what yard they're cleaning. But I mean, they need to stop dumping over the fence on the side of the pond.
Yeah.
It really bothers me to see that. And I'm going to say it's somebody in close proximity, you know, to that. But.
Yeah.
And if you look at the way they're dumping from, it's very obvious. So I'm trying not to say it, but it needs to be cleaned and it needs to stop, is what I'm saying.
I agree, Mr. Quintle. And we actually have that unfortunately in many of our parks. So we end up getting stuck with it and trying to get them on camera. But yeah, I agree that it would be very helpful if those individuals stopped doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job by all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I was trying to be eloquent. Capital Funding Request. Special, Spring Special Town Meeting Article Four. Mr. Coyle or Ms. Barrett?
Mr. Chairman, before we move on to the next item, we would need a formal vote to allocate the ARPA funding for these playgrounds.
I'll make the motion that we approve that.
I know, second.
Motion by Mr. Blitzer, second by Mr. Helm, I believe. Discussion? Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Bill Coyle, DPW Director, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So thank you for having me here this evening to talk to you about the Article Four Spring Special Town Meeting Capital Funding Request for 3.4 million to purchase 22 Mary B Lane in addition to the engineering costs and the owner's project manager as well. So many of you may be aware, back in 2022, a feasibility study was done for the complete replacement of the DPW facility. New facility, and I believe it was presented to the select board at that time, was an entirely new facility, which had, which would have demo, demoed the salt shed, the fueling station, and other areas of the current DPW. There were two buildings that were going to be retained and renovated and then additions created off of those buildings. In addition to, one of the biggest expenses at that time was about 100,000 square foot, so basically two and a half acres of a building to house all DPW vehicles, which would be a great thing. But obviously, it's a very costly thing as well. So I, you know, obviously I was not here at that time. So completely understandable that 90 to 100 million dollars was something that just the town could, could not afford and to spend for a new DPW facility. So last year, the, the property owners of 22 Mary B Lane approached town administration about the possibility of purchasing their building. So 22 Mary B Lane is located immediately adjacent to the DPW facility. I know many of you have already toured the building, which I'll speak to later about an open house that we'll be having. But it's very convenient. It's, you can walk to it from our garage. The back door is right there. It's accessible. Trucks are probably less than 50 to 100 feet away from this building. This building would serve the needs of primarily our administrative staff. So what it would do is it would house all of the highway department, parks and forestry, water, sewer, engineering, all in one, one building. So it'd be one-stop shopping for, for the residents and for the businesses. If they have questions, they want to come talk to someone from water or sewer or highway or engineering or myself, will all be in one building. The other benefit of this is right now, we're spread out over four different locations. So highways in one building, water and parks and forestry in another building, sewer in another building, and an engineering here at town hall. So it would also make us much more efficient to have all of us in one location. When we have meetings, just myself, if I want to meet with engineering, it's literally 15 minutes each way. It's a half hour out of my day to come up here and meet with engineering staff. So it'd be much more efficient as well. So the, the cost of the, the initial facility was 80 to 100 million, but the new administration building was about 20 million. So this building, to purchase it, design the, the total renovation of the structure, which we'd have to gut it. And keep in mind, this building's only 12 years old. It's relatively new. I think I mentioned it's 12,000 square feet with a 4,000 square foot mezzanine, a second floor that we would utilize. To renovate it would be eight to 10 million. So we want to make sure that town meeting members know that it's not just the cost to purchase the building and the engineering, but the total build-out would be eight to 10 million. But that would serve the needs, I think, of DPW for many years. Certainly there's things that additionally that we would like to have, but you know, what you'd like to have and what you need to have are two different things. Currently, if we were to hire one new employee in, in any of these buildings, in particular on highway or, or even water or parks, there's no room for another office staff member. They're, they're already crammed. If people want to attend, expect the open house, town meeting members are certainly invited on March 16th. It's a Saturday from 10:00 to 11:30. Certainly welcome to come to 159 Camelot Drive. That's the highway building. 169 Camelot Drive, which is the, the water and parks and forestry, and then also 22 Mary B Lane. All three buildings will be open and you're all welcome to attend and tour the facility. And we can point out what would be, be our needs, how they would be met by, if we're fortunate enough to have town meeting members support this article. And I'd be happy to answer. Oh, one last thing I want to add too is, we're also working with PAC TV currently to create a video that we would present to town meeting members and also have that available hopefully for presentation night as well. So we'll hope to have that video to kind of show the existing facilities. If people aren't able to make it to the tour, we'll have that video so they can see the existing conditions and the proposed building at 22 Mary B Lane as well. Thank you. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yeah, thanks, Bill. And I, I toured, you know, I went up and toured that building and I talked to some of the building committee about it. I looked at the proximity to the, the other building. And this, this to me, I, it's kind, it's a no brainer. I mean, and just so everybody at home, Harry's people at home, as he always says, just so they understand, this is not a want. This is a need. This is a need. We're going to be more efficient, everybody under one roof, more accountable. It, it just makes so much sense in the cost. It, you know, we were going to, we were talking about spending 20 million. This will cost eight to 10, let's say 10. So it's half, it's half what it would have cost. So, and they, they, the building committee told me, I asked them point blank, is this, this is a great building. The bones are great. It's, it's a fairly new building. And so they, they were 100% in favor of doing this. So I, I think we, this is something that town meeting, I hope they, I know, I believe we're going to support it. I know I am. So I hope that town meeting is, realizes that this is not just for today and tomorrow. This is for long-term.
Absolutely.
This is a long-term building. Okay?
I agree.
So I, I hope they support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Mahoney?
Bill, I was also at the site visit. Excuse me. But so it just makes complete sense, just reinforcing what Mr. Blitzer said. The site is contiguous to a sizable parcel that the community already has. It's something that the community needs. It'll be, you know, investing in something proactively and building efficiencies into the, you know, the ability of that department to function. And then on top of that, if you look at the eight to 10 million dollar build-out, the reconstruction of that building that we need to do to make it fit our needs, I can comfortably say right now that I think we can do that without raising property taxes. And that's one of the funds that we have going on. So I, I support this 100%.
Thank, thank you.
Okay. I, I agree with a part of it. So I still have a few questions and I just want to be clear about it. I'm very aware of the DPW and like you say, they're all in separate buildings, but they used to be all over town. They used to be on, they were everywhere. The water department, I just can't, Brewster Street, I think it was. Or if it wasn't Brewster, it was Howland. And they were, they were everywhere. So long story short, when this was upstairs and we were talking about this, I was going to vote against it. And the reason I was going to vote against it was because we were going to finance the. finance the building with the renovations, and then it was the finance director, and you're more than welcome to come up, Lynn, that said that you had monies here and there, and we could pretty much pay cash for the building. I just want everybody to, that's watching, town meeting members, to know how this went and, you know, how I feel about it, so, I mean, I'm, I know all the logic to having everybody next to each other, and it is a great parcel, I mean, I'm for buying the building, but to be honest with you, when it comes to borrowing money to renovate it, I say, let's take a breath, I mean, and I had asked you point-blank out that we have fire stations we're renovating over and whatever this building might need, without looking at everything. So I just want everyone to know that, before we go borrowing money for this, for the renovation part of it, because I think you pretty much assured us we could pay, I'm gonna use the word cash, for the building what we had in sale of real estate, and we had some over here and some over there, without looking at it and writing everything down. So that's pretty much still the case?
Yes, so the, the purchase and the design and the oversight for this project, the 3.4 million dollars, we're only gonna finance about 30% of that, so it's a very small portion of that particular part, and.
Okay, go ahead.
And then the overall build-out project, we have a lot of debt over the next few years that's gonna be falling off, and this particular project would fit, fit within our guidelines, our policy and our debt service as a percentage of our budget. So I don't foresee any issues with that. And as John mentioned, as the meals tax, you know, revenue increases, we have that other, the meals tax fund which supports this building, and then in the future could possibly support financing of a DPW building, or a school building, or something like that. So there are some other funding sources for future support of that financing.
Okay, so your recommendation is to finance that we have the money, no problems. You and John. Hey, John? Speak now.
Yes.
You're on record, please, Mr. Mahoney.
So, there was a, I believe last year, there was a 10-year plan on capital, we saw it appear probably earlier this year, what is this, maybe in 2023, this is '24, and I believe the 10-year plan Lynn had us for capital improvements out about 600 million dollars over a decade? Okay, so if you look at the community, if you look at it over 30 or 40-year timeframe, it's easily in the billions, it's gotta be three to five billion all day long. So, what we set up with that meals tax account, you know, a few years down the road, and I, I know that the school department is hopefully, hoping to get a new school for North Plymouth, but three to five years down the road, that account is gonna be prepped up to certainly handle a smaller capital investment, whether it be a 10 million dollar fire station, or an eight to 10 million dollar modernization of this building if we acquire it. Simply, unless of course, there is another interruption such as a worldwide pandemic, or some other unforeseen World War III, or things of that nature, but if that account continues to progress as it is, it should be able to handle up, handle the eight to 10 million with absolutely no problem. And then of course, if our fearless governor gets what she wants approved in this budgetary cycle, she's gonna look to give the communities the option of taking that meals tax option from three-quarters of 1% to 1%, and if that passes and we do the same thing with it, then I can tell you with 100% certainty, that would handle this. Now, it's just difficult in the current scenario that we're in, where you have eight elementary schools that are all over, that are all 49 years of age or older, you have a junior high school in PCIS that was built in 72, you still have fire stations that need to be addressed, I think we have, oh, oh. He doesn't wanna be brought into it, but I think, you know, a few years down the road, we might need a larger public safety building, so, you know, unfortunately, the question is, it's gonna be a competition, who gets to the basket first to withdraw that next ability to make, get a project done without raising property taxes, and this board always has to keep an eye on the, the objective, we should be doing whatever we can to do more and more in that, so that everything is not always being done through raising property taxes, and, you know, going back to what Ms. Bratty had up there earlier, where seniors are concerned about, you know, part of it aging in place, and they always, the property taxes going up, and we just have to be very mindful of that.
Thank you, John. No, you did a good job. And for all the things you said, and all the buildings we need, and all the uncertainties, that's why I'm asking the questions, it's not to give anybody a hard time, by no means, but I do see one chief out here, and I do know that in a few years, he is gonna need a new building, and that's exactly why I'm asking the questions I'm asking, I mean, I'm all for getting the building right now, but how about we take a breath, let's reevaluate, we got budgets we're, we're struggling with, that's all, and people are struggling with their taxes, so that's really why I brought it up, and I just wanted to be clear of how we went and how we got here, and, you know, it's really a concern, and I, and I know it's a good buy for the town, I, there's no question about that, it makes perfect sense that way, but how much can we afford, I guess, is the question, that we're gonna all face, whether it's today, the new board two years from now, I mean, the next couple of years are gonna be tough in this town, and, and that's why I'm gonna keep reminding, and I'm sure when it gets to town meeting, they'll do their due diligence and ask the questions that I'm gonna ask. Mr. Mahoney, then Mr. Blitzer?
Lynn, the purchase price is 2.4, correct?
Yeah, so they had, they had asked for 2.6 million, but they, we negotiated down to 2.4.
2.4, cause, so could you just tell the viewing audience how we're coming up with the 2.4 to pay for the, the purchase alone?
So, we have come up with sale of real estate of 1.2 million, which is the sale of the school administration building on South Meadow Road, we have 580,000 remaining in the construction fund for this town hall building, and we have almost 54,000 left in the maritime facility construction, so we're using like all of those building funds to actually purchase this, this building, and then we have some free cash, and then for the remaining, for the design and OPM, we're gonna be doing some borrowing.
Mr. Blitzer, then Mr. Canty?
I can just say that this building is available, okay? It came available, it's right next door to the other building, it's, it's something that we need, so if we hold off for a year or two, that building won't be available, and what are we gonna find that's suitable, what's it gonna cost? You know, if we don't do this and get proactive, we're gonna do what's happened the last 10, 15 years, is not do anything, and then when we have to do it, it's gonna cost a lot more money, that's where we at today, I've been on this board three years, and all we've been doing is trying to fix problems from the past, so, I, this building's available now, it's the right, I think it's the right price, the, the building, it's the right location, it's gonna make us more efficient, we already heard from the previous DPW director that the building he wanted was gonna be 20 million, this is gonna cost us half that right now, if we wait, if we wait two or three years or whatever, and I'm a, I'm a glass half-full guy, so, so I'm thinking that we're gonna, revenues, things are gonna get a lot better, and we're gonna be able to afford this, but if, if we wait, and we don't do this now, it's gonna cost us 20 million, so, so I'm, I'm ready to vote for this right now, and I'm hoping that, that town meeting pays attention and listens to, to their, their experts that, about this, and realizes something that we have to do. Thank you.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I agree that the opportunity to buy an adjacent parcel, which would increase efficiency and maximize the use of both our current parcel and the nearby parcel, is a, is a very good purchase for the town positioning us for a future that would be much more viable for the DPW as it continues to grow over time, not just in the near term, but in the long term. However, I do hear what the chairman is saying about needing to evaluate our needs going forward, as we do have an increasing budget, we do have increasing strains, we're seeing a reduction in things like state aid, obviously at the federal level, we're seeing periodic instances of absolute chaos and shutdowns on a recurring basis, which is disconcerting. So, I think that we do need to be more mindful of how we're gonna spend money in the future, but this, even if we buy this parcel now and did sit on it for a bit, the important part, the step one here, is buying the adjacent parcel positions this community for a future that it gets to determine, rather than, as we've seen and as Charlie alluded to, a future determined by others, either by the inaction of other leaders in the past, or by the fact that we have allowed private interests to make decisions for us without guiding those in the past. This is an opportunity to seize a small part of our future, and I think it is notable too, that the prior DPW director was proposing a 100 million dollar super campus, fit for Ramses II, and now we're, now we're looking at a 10 million dollar project, so 10 million is still a lot of money, but that's 90% less than it used to be, so that's positive, in my opinion, and I think, I think our new leadership and our new direction is being by that type of a reduction, rather than just saying, oh, that last guy's idea was good, I'll go with that, is actually making harder decisions and, and looking at what this community needs and can actually afford in tandem, not just a wishlist of aspirational thinking, which I do not think was ever going to be realistic. So I think in the near term for this town meeting, the acquisition of the parcel is very important to the town's strategic positioning, and I think we, we will, the DPW will, entire community will, taking into account all the things John brought up, all the other needs we have that are known, as well as leaving a little bit for unknown needs, cause for example, no one knew the sewer was gonna explode back in February of 2015 or thereabouts, so we always need to have a little bit of cushion there in case something else like that happens, but we will be mindful of that going forward, but this purchase right now sets us up for a better future than if we don't make it, so that's why I anticipate supporting this, and I hope that town meeting will do so as well, thank you.
Thank you, and just to clarify, I wasn't against purchasing the building, I was against borrowing to purchase the building, and we're not doing that now, we're just doing a portion of it, Mr. Blitzer, and if hadn't I brought it up in executive session, we would've been financing the whole thing, that's what I brought up. So, the 30% of the number, just for the record, to clarify it, of, of the building purchase and the renovations, it's the renovations I'm against at the moment, but it is a good purchase, I agree, I am gonna vote positive for the big package, but you know, you can't always get what you want, at least where I come from, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what's right for the town, but I wanna be crystal clear on how I got to this and why I feel this way, cause it was 100% the other way, unless I had asked the questions that I asked. Mr. Helm?
Just closing out, I get maybe, maybe closing out comments by the select board, one never knows, I'm in agreement with the chairman and why he is voting yes, I'm voting yes for exactly the same reasons, because had it not been changed to this, I would be voting no, but the reality is, it is not a bad idea to buy property, if you go back through the history of this town, we have walked away from incredible deals that we have regretted not buying, okay, this would be one of them, we need to remember that just because we purchase it, if things change and it is not used as the DPW center or part of it, we can sell it, and we will actually make money on it, you know, just like several properties that we have turned our back in, in the recent past, and walked away from, and that's, that is one of, besides the fact that the financing is now less of a burden to the taxpayers, that's another reason why I will be supporting it, because if we change our minds, we'll sell it.
That being said, any more discussion?
For the chair, I just wanna make one comment on that. The actual purchase price, just for the record, is 2,450,000, it's not 2.4. Doesn't change anything, so you guys know, the actual request for the article is still the same.
Okay, thank you. Pleasure of the board.
I'd make a motion that we include Article Four in the town meeting warrant and recommend it to town meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer, discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
I vote yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. That is a fun one, loitering bylaw. Welcome.
Thanks for having us. So here's a follow-up from our attendance here a couple weeks ago, where we brought a proposal before the board of implementation of a loitering bylaw, to address some of the issues we have in some of the public parking areas, parking lots and other locations within town, help us better serve our constituents and being able to give us a tool to address the problems. So, with me as Attorney McKay, to answer any further questions you may have.
Any questions from the board, Mr. Canty? Mr. Helm? It looks like Mr. Blitzer? No, no?
I'm sure I will.
Chief Lynn, thank you for coming forward, I, we had an opportunity to meet this past Friday about this littering, I mean, loitering, sorry, bylaw, so what is your pleasure at this time, is this something you wanna pursue in the near term, or did you wanna pursue other opportunities at the moment, if it were up to you?
I think at this time, I'd rather, I'd like to pursue the, the bylaws presented.
Okay, so when we had met on Friday, you had a bit of a different perspective, could, what if anything has changed since Friday?
I think just the, the amount of work we put into this, and what we had discussed on Friday about putting time limits, time limits on that specific location, that's not the only location we're having problems with, we have problems with the parking garage right next door, we have issues, this, this bylaw may help us address some of the issues we may have with some of the panhandling that we have, if you read it, so I think if we're gonna try to do something to solve some of these nuisance problems, if you will, I would like, if we are here now, I'd like to see, try to see if we can take care of it in, at one time.
So, one of the, I guess, one of the issues with both the loitering bylaws, as well as the issue of panhandling, is it, it touches upon some constitutional-related issues, this may be better answered by Attorney McKay, so if, if need be, that could certainly happen, but I know one of the issues that was talked about with you, Chief Lynn, and myself on Friday, was about the ability to train officers to respond correctly to some of these, and in sort of the ambiguity in some of these situations, as opposed to if there was a posted time that a particular parking lot was supposed to close, that officer responding, he or she could point out, you know, this lot is closed, you're beyond closing, they could issue a parking ticket if that person didn't disperse or persons, it could. It could escalate further from there, if need be, if it was a particularly egregious situation. Whereas, the loitering by law, the text that we have been presented in the past was more ambiguous, and was putting some of your officers in a position where they were making some interpretive decisions, as opposed to just pointing to something objective and applying it. So, could you speak to any concerns you have about training and responding and subjecting your officers to that type of situation?
Well, first of all, the officers are well-trained in their jobs right now, and this would be no different than any other training we provide for any new law that comes our way. Again, what we had discussed on Friday would be more concrete and more, again, would take any real subjectivity out of it. Again, the concern, we were talking about putting hours, restricting hours to that one location.
Right.
What do we do with the parking garage? Similar situation, we put restrictions on there. I would hate to go have the Chamber of Commerce or the business owners come show up at a meeting with me trying to present closing the parking garage or the parking lot behind North Street, you know, say at 9:00 at night. We would have a revolt all day long. So, nothing is perfect here, but this will definitely give us a tool in our toolbox to address the problem immediately, at the lowest level possible, again, without the time-consuming process if we do have to go the extent of an arrest or summons or similar.
Well, I know one of your concerns on Friday as well was that the department, obviously you're covering a significant amount of area, you have the staff to cover that area when you're fully staffed, but obviously, the department can lose an employee in about two weeks, but it takes like six to nine months to gain one, so you're often not at full staff. And the more tools are in your toolbox, the more people, the more times people are going to be reaching into that toolbox, and you're responsible for drug arrests, traffic enforcement, OUIs, you respond to accidents, you're dealing with wellness checks, you're dealing with all those things. So, you were concerned on Friday about the capacity of the department to absorb some of this, in addition to those other responsibilities that are also obviously of importance.
Right.
So, can you speak to any concerns that you have about the ability of the department to respond to loitering, as opposed to all of those other obligations that we're aware of?
Well, right now, with the loitering, right now, if we go by a certain location and see people hanging out without any particular activity or activity that's not appropriate for the location, we really have nothing to move these people along unless we witness something, or we get a complaint. Right now, if we see, with the loitering by law, if we see something that is not, again, in line with the activity expected in a certain location, we can immediately address it, handle it right there, move people along, and move on to the next thing. Right now, it's almost kind of like we move people along, they return, we move them along, they return. This will give us, again, some teeth to what we're trying to accomplish to serve the residents.
So, in terms of that, the most recent version of the text that I have, which, again, it wasn't in the packet, so I assume it hasn't changed, it says, "No person shall stay on a street sidewalk or parking lot with the intent to cause public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm, or recklessly create a risk of public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm." So, I guess I still have a lingering concern about the interpretation of the intent. How would a responding officer be able to, you said they would be responding with what they anticipate to see in that place? How would they be responding and knowing that someone is intending by their conduct in that place to cause public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm?
But if you look further, in my interpretation, it's where recklessly creates a risk of public inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm. So, the large gathering, the, you know, the activities that go along, the horse play and whatnot, that's what we, that kind of gives us the anticipatory issue, the element here, that would allow us to address it.
Okay. I have some questions for Attorney McKay. So, Attorney McKay, when we had talked about this last time, I had brought up the issue that, in particular, streets and sidewalks are one of the highest levels of protection in terms of a physical place for First Amendment-related issues. Obviously, First Amendment-related lawsuits can be quite expensive for a community, in addition to any other potential lawsuits that a loitering by law could engender, such as 1983 claims or something of that nature. So, could you opine as to your review of this language and whether you think there is liability being created for the town for First Amendment-related issues, civil rights-related issues, or other related issues?
So, I think if the officers are properly trained, if they apply the law, or they apply the by law in, I won't say the proper way, but if, for example, if there is a call for disturbance or for something going on in a particular parking lot, if there are multiple residents calling, playing, oh, sure. If there is a, if the police receive multiple calls, for instance, for a group in a parking lot, they go the first time and they say, "We've had X number of calls, you in this parking lot are loud, disruptive," whatever the complaints are, those people are then on notice that their conduct is creating public annoyance, alarm, whatever the complaint is, and it sounds like there have been some coming from specific areas of Plymouth. If that warning is given and the people disperse, if, I would argue if they come back again after being put on notice that their conduct was within the loitering by law, or was what the loitering by law intends to address, and they come back, I would argue that that would be some evidence of their intent to continue acting that way and to continue with the behavior that the by law is intended to address, where it's a fine, it's not an arrestable offense, it's a civil infraction, for lack of a better way to characterize it, they would receive a ticket. There's no arrest, there's no criminal penalties with this, so.
Correct.
I don't, properly trained officers, I don't foresee, for what it's worth, getting into any type of 1983 action if they are merely responding, asking them to disperse, if they're called back handing over a ticket. Now, I can't extrapolate out every single situation that's going to occur, but in terms of a handing over a ticket, that, just that fact pattern alone, I think is maybe less likely to result in that.
So, could you outline sort of a two-step process there, where there'd be a warning, and then if a failure to disperse or a return occurred, then an issue, a violation would issue? Could you, in the text of the by law that's been provided to us previously, point out to me where that two-step process is outlined?
So, the two-step process is not specifically outlined here in the by law, but when it comes to, "No person shall stay," so first of all, stay on a street sidewalk or parking lot with the intent, I would argue, for purposes of this discussion, that, first of all, that person has to evidence some kind of intent to stay, so that almost implies that somebody's going up and asking them to leave, so that's your first encounter. If they then remain and another call or another encounter happens, or if they choose to say, "I'm not going to listen to you, I'm staying anyways," you have that first encounter where they're being put on notice that their behavior is within the bounds of the by law. So, by operation of the by law, there has to be that first encounter, because you have to, the police would have to establish that they intend to stay there. And then, if they are told on that first interaction that their conduct is causing one of the things enumerated in the by law, and they then either came back or they remained, and they continued to behave that way, that would be, I would argue, that would be evidence of their intent to continue in that behavior after being advised and after being put on notice, that the result of their conduct is that the police are being called, there are complaints being had. So, although it doesn't outline a two-step process, not, I don't know how the police would establish intent, or how they would establish that a person was staying if there was only one interaction.
But you would agree, then, that your assessment of limited liability on the town was dependent on the training and execution of the by law properly by these officers, the absence of a two-step process in the by law? If I were an officer responding and looking at the by law and enforcing it, I would only see that I could issue, for a first offense, a $50 violation, right? So, if I'm that rookie responding officer, for sake of argument, maybe that's how I interpret that, right? Maybe that's why I issue that violation without any of that process that you outlined, and maybe that opens the town up to liability for the reasons that I talked about earlier. So, wouldn't it be better if we had a different version of this by law at a future town meeting, perhaps, that deals with some of those procedural issues that we're not dealing with? I mean, we just dealt with, as a community, that issue with the colorful metaphors directed at the President of the United States by some, a particular individual, with some signage that caused the town's signed by law to be revised and revoked. So, wouldn't it be better if we had a version of this that addresses these concerns, rather than leaving it ambiguous as it's written?
I can certainly add some steps to it if you'd like, but I would, I would, I guess, respond with, officer, sorry, Chief Flynn has indicated that his officers are fairly well-trained, and they, as he has said, the best, they have training and they go through an academy, and they.
Right.
They, I have not been through the academy, but I believe they get some fairly rigorous instruction on all different areas of policing. I would say that if they were advised as to how to establish intent and establish somebody's intent to stay.
Right.
That would be accomplished if they had that advising, for lack of a better word.
So, what about the eventuality where they either were not properly advised, or they made a mistake, and they issued, they issued the violation without any of that two-step process that you outlined? Would you agree that in that situation, the town would be opening itself up to certain liabilities?
Since the procedure is just for a civil infraction, a ticket, and that person would likely have that right of appeal, I think as a violation of any by law, if I understand correctly, or with the district court, I would anticipate that if they chose to appeal that ticket, and if the decision came down that said, "Yes, this shouldn't have been issued," or the by law was not applied properly, or we'll give you a pass on this first, or whatever the decision is, I would imagine that that would, if the decision was, "Yes, this ticket was properly issued," then that's following up with the proper application of the law, that's evidence of the proper application of the by law. If it was overturned, I'm not, I don't know that I'm ready to opine that a civil fine of $50 would, one civil fine of $50 overturned would open the town up to complete liability. I'd want to, I think, investigate that a little bit more before I gave a black and white opinion on that.
But you certainly would agree that a aggrieved citizen or visitor could file a lawsuit with the town, as opposed to just appealing it for issuance of a ticket if they felt harassed, or if they felt that it was applied to them in a disparate impact from other individuals? Would that be accurate?
Not to be overly flip, but I think that that could happen at any point when an officer issues a ticket, if they are subjectively feeling that they are being harassed or they're being targeted. So, I don't know that there's a way to write any by law that insulates the person receiving the violation from feeling targeted, harassed, focused on.
I would agree with you, which is a reason why we may not want to have a loitering by law in the town of Plymouth. However, the way that this one is written, in my opinion, does subject the town to a significant amount of, the officers to a significant amount of ambiguity. I understand, I'm not criticizing the chief, I'm not criticizing his officers or the training that they have, but it's a difficult job done by human beings that have other things going on in their lives, and people are humans, they make mistakes, or they interpret something one way, and obviously, it should have been interpreted another way with hindsight, but they have to make a snap decision at that time. But the community is left with the consequences of those decisions, as well as the people that are impacted by the decisions made by those officers in those circumstances. I know routinely, the officers of the police department are responding to situations, walking into situations where they don't have all the facts. They get a phone call, they get information from somebody calling 911 or calling the business line, and they walk into a relatively unknown situation where all they have is some third-party witness that they're coming into, and that's a tense situation, and I'm glad that they have a lot of training in that situation. But there's a significant amount of judgment involved there that they're taking on for themselves routinely for these long shifts, and I just have concerns that the language here subjects these officers to be putting in a, put in a situation where a resident can pick up the phone and say that they are alarmed by the presence of some group of unknown size, origin, or residence, and all of a sudden, an officer is on the street issuing a ticket, potentially subjecting the town to liability, to potentially putting that individual that didn't even know they were alarming somebody to an unpleasant interaction with the police, and just kind of reversing some of the steps we're seeing with policing efforts in a larger scale. I just have a lot of concerns about how this by law would actually play out, based on how I've seen it play out in other communities as well, similar language. So, I appreciate your, both of your responses to my inquiries, but thank you for the time being.
Mr. Blitzer?
I don't even know what to say. I'm really, Kevin, you just blow me away, some of the stuff you just said. You're an officer of the court. Should they just not make arrests? I mean, every time they encounter a subject and have to make an arrest, they're subject to liability, I mean, the police officers. I have a lot of faith in my chief and in the officers, the well-trained officers of our departments, okay? But I want to start off with, first of all, there's people sitting here, up here, people at home also, have no idea some of the things you were just talking about. Number one, the meeting on Friday, I don't think the board knew about that. I found out that you had a meeting with Chief Flynn about this by law, and you brought a point of order last week to me, I'm bringing a point of order up. You should have gone through the chairman. The chairman should have been notified, and you were trying to change the by law without talking to the boards and the board voting on it. So, that's what we're doing tonight, we're doing in the open meeting, and I got word of it, and I asked, let's go forward with this by law, just as it was, because there's people here tonight, and you're going to listen, you're going to listen to Pat Plymouth, Desmond, our director, you're going to listen to the complaints that he get, the calls he gets that he directs to the police department from problems in our parking lots, okay? And they're after hours, because during the hours, they take care of the problems, unless it's criminal, but he forwards them to the police department. You're going to listen to, and also, he's going to tell you about some of the damage done in the garage from vandals. You're going to hear from a couple of neighbors, there's three in the room here right now, that are going to talk about their quiet enjoyment. You know, you talk about civil rights or rights of citizens, how about the rights of the citizens in their homes that want to have quiet enjoyment and want to be able to go to sleep at night and not at 1:00 in the morning get awoken from engines revving, cars ripping out, from youth that are hanging in that parking lot. They're not parking there to go to businesses, they're in there simply to hang out, and I'll tell you what, leave the meeting tonight and smell the marijuana out there, okay? I smell it every Tuesday night, okay? It's a hangout for these young kids that get nowhere else to go. But it's in But it's intimidating, you're going to hear affidavits from businesses that say their employees who, that are, that we encourage, or Desmond from PGDC, Park Plymouth, encourages the employees downtown to get off the prime, park in the garage at a discounted rate. Well, they're intimidated going up there at night when you've got several youths up there drinking, smoking pot, they get music going, and it's intimidating walking in there. So that's, you're going to hear from people about that. That's why this bylaw is being created. On top of that, you're going to hear from the chief himself, who witnessed the situation at Copper Cove across the street from Copper Cove. And this is from people that don't belong in that parking lot. They're not parking there to go to businesses or to enjoy our downtown waterfront, they're there simply to hang out, play loud music, smoke pot, drink, and bother the neighbors. This is what this is about. You're going to hear from our town manager about the complaints he gets, okay? All the complaints he gets. You talk about, you started to allege to, that they're going to be able to handle all these calls. This call is, to these folks right here, this call of kids in the garage revving their engines, playing loud music, is just as important to them as somebody at, one of the restaurants or bars has a, has a disruptive patron and they need help to get that patron out of there. It's just as important. So you're going to, you're going to listen, and you talked about the police, you're speculating that this could happen, that could happen. You know, that's not, the chief needs a tool for his police officers to go get a call, they get dispatched, and they can go in and say, hey, fellas, which I, and I, just so you know, I did it Saturday night. I was in that garage and there were some issues, and I very nicely said to them, hey, guys, you're disrupting the neighbors, the police have already been here and they may be coming back, so you, I didn't tell them to get out because I couldn't do that. But if you, if the, if we have this loitering, and there'll be signage for it, if there was a loiter, you know, they can, the officers can say, hey, fellas, get out of here, okay? If I come back, you're going to get tickets. Very simple, and believe me, they'll, they'll dispatch, they'll take off. If they come back and they get called again, they'll write a ticket, okay? That's what this is about. It is, and it's behind, I witnessed it, now I'm going to get personal myself, what I saw, for 20 years at East Bay Grill, behind East Bay Grill, okay? And there's nothing we could do because it was a state parking lot, it wasn't our parking lot. The kids would tell you to go F yourself when you're telling them to move. In the meantime, I get a business being run, I get people having dinner, and there's kids there, and I get, I get foul language, I get music right up against the fence, smoking marijuana. People thought that we allowed marijuana in East Bay Grill, okay? We called the police and they would come down, they'd tell me, and they'd, as soon as the police left, they'd be burning rubber out of there, coming back and doing the same activity. And it was week after week after week, okay? And these, these were young people that, because I asked them, where are you from? Hingham, Norwell, Duxbury, there was, it wasn't, it wasn't even Plymouth residents. But it doesn't matter. If you're there and you're not there for business, okay, or parking, which is what those parking lots are for, then, then you don't belong there. It's that simple. You do not belong there. Go, go away from, go in your own neighborhood, okay? Or go somewhere where you're not disrupting folks like this that are sitting right here. So I, I believe, and I'll tell you, I think I speak for, if not every business in Plymouth, probably most of them, if, and every resident, most of them feel the same as I feel. And as far as, what bothers me is you're trying to create, change this bylaw without the boards, and, and it's not, it's not the way, when you talk about point of orders, that's not the way things are done, okay? You should have called the chairman and said, can we table this? I'd like to discuss some things, okay? So you, you've been talking and, and nobody even knows what you were talking about. I don't think that you know, I don't think Harry knew, or John probably didn't, so closing the parking lots, when I heard this, I, I, I don't, I don't even, I can't even respond to that. That's the most irresponsible solution to this problem. I can't even imagine if the businesses, if it got out, and a couple of businesses found out about it, that we wanted to close the parking lots at 9:00. We have, we don't have enough parking, Desmond, you can, please, when you come up, you can attest to our parking problem. If we try to close the parking lots, it would be, would get, you'd get lambasted. And also, people would see 9:00 closing, and at 7:00, they say, I can't park here because I don't want to get my car towed after 9:00. It's something, we could never do that, you know? You know, in the downtown waterfront, which is where all the, where the parking is needed. So that, that, that's, that wasn't, that's not even a solution. It's, I don't want to be disruptive, Kevin, I have a lot of respect for you, I really do, you're an officer of the court, but you have to have more faith in your police department, in your chief, and, and you have to listen to your residents, okay? Please, listen to your residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Charlie, I apologize that you were taken unaware of the fact that I met with the chief. Obviously, I met with the chief.
Can you have a point of order for a minute, chief?
I met with the chief.
Could you now start over again, first of all, read about, and then speak about, tell them exactly, tell everybody what exactly happened, Frank.
So Charlie, you asked me to meet with the chief. I met with the chief because you asked me to meet with him. And Chief Flynn, did I ask for a meeting with you on Friday or did you contact me about the meeting on Friday?
Just as a point of clarification, I called you to see if you and I, I could better articulate to you the reason I was, wanted to go forward with this bylaw.
Thank you, chief, I appreciate that. So Charlie, in the future, if you ask me to follow up with someone in advance of a meeting...
It wasn't to change the bylaw.
I will certainly...
It was not to change the bylaw.
I will certainly bring that up with the chairman, but I was, I was doing that because you had requested. Then the chief did send us out an email through Derek that was forwarded to us on Friday at 1:53 PM. You may have forgotten about that, Charlie, but don't worry, I printed out copies, I've just provided you with one, and I'll put one, I'll give one to Ginny so it can be in the meeting minutes, that explains that that meeting happened. I left there only like a couple hours before that email was sent out and you were notified about that.
Right.
And we actually had an opportunity to speak before this meeting about that, that conversation as well, when you reached out to me about another issue. So I think you were well-informed of that, Charlie?
I was, I was.
So I, I think, I'm a little surprised by your reaction to that. Now, obviously, when I had the meeting with Chief Flynn, it was not to change the bylaw. The meeting was to discuss it. At the end of that meeting, the chief had an opinion that was expressed in this email. And chief, did I encourage the suggestions that you had at that meeting? I know your opinion is a little different now, but just for the record, were those suggestions that you had at that time your suggestions or were they something that I had demanded or otherwise insisted that you make?
No, I think it was something that, based upon our conversation, you know, perhaps try this, as opposed to the, to the bylaw.
And, and the issue of closing the parking lots at certain times, is that a suggestion that you came up with at that time or is that a suggestion I came up with?
No, that was mine, because we discussed, we have other bylaws within the town, like our local parks and beaches bylaws, that close them at certain times of day, or evening, dusk, certain times. And I had posed the question, why is that? And I, and my, my opinion of that was because we didn't want loitering in those places, because we didn't want the nefarious activity occurring during those times. So, you know, it was, it was a consideration, it was, it was based upon the discussion we had in correlation to the similar bylaws that we have to keep people out of certain areas during certain periods of time.
Yes, understood, thank you. And Charlie, you did request that the text of the bylaw be provided to the board, so I took the liberty of also including in that pack, and I just handed to you the text of the bylaw so that you and the other members of the board have that, so hopefully...
It wasn't for me, I wanted the bylaw read out so the people that are watching this, or the people in the audience would know. That's what that was about, okay? And as far as, I had, selectmen next to me knew nothing about this, so, so that's where that came from. But I, not to keep debating this, but the officers can go in, if there's a loitering ban, and say, there's no loitering, leave the parking lot. If they come back, now it becomes criminal, it can become trespassing, okay? And if they, if they get, and the officers observe agitation or aggressive behavior, then they can arrest them for disorderly conduct. But that's, that's not the intent of this bylaw. The intent is just to get them to move on so folks like this can go to bed and endure, and not have to worry about all the stuff that's going on. But, you know, I, I want you to hear from some of these folks and you realize why we need this bylaw.
Okay, so if I may, I'm going to, you folks want to say a little piece? Come on up to the microphone. Make sure the green light's on.
It is.
And you identify yourself for the record. I think you can do it in about three minutes, I know you've been here for like three hours.
Believe me, this is going to be quick.
Okay, all right. Not, not that I want you to be quick, I'm just, that's what I say to everybody.
Well, it's to the point and to the issue. Hello, I'm Anne McCormick. I live at 30 Russell Street, I'm neighbors of Town Hall. Thank you for the opportunity, I'm going to read because I'm better at that than off the cuff. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my, sure, thank you. Thank you, okay. The opportunity to voice my distress regarding the ongoing activity and issues at the parking garage on South Russell Street. To be more specific, several motor vehicles are frequenting the lower enclosed garage. There are at least a half a dozen cars whose exhausts have been altered to enhance the volume. The goal seems to be which operator can out-amplify the drivers of the other cars. This takes place during the day after school lets out, and that's less frequently, but it does take place. I'm now recently retired from Wareham District Court, and so now I'm dealing with this during the day at times, after school lets out and ramps up at night with revving and backfiring of these cars, increasing throughout the weekends and often after midnight. This gang of predominantly young males hanging out have clearly claimed the lower enclosed parking garage as their turf. This past Saturday evening, we were walking home from dinner with two of our grandkids and saw a black car entering the garage with illegal tinted, non-transparent windows with a plastic cover over its license plate, which made it impossible to read the registration. So the owner of that particular car has gone to great lengths to conceal their identity. The purpose of the garage is to provide parking for people attending concerts at the Spire and Memorial Hall and to enjoy shopping, cultural events, and dining in downtown Plymouth. And the constant noise is disturbing, intimidating, and unreasonably disruptive. And that language is disturbing the peace. Going forward, I am asking the Board of Selectmen in Plymouth PD to put in place an appropriate course of action to impose restrictions for loitering and to restore the parking lots to their intended use. And if I may, a business owner who was, intention was to attend tonight's meeting, has a sick child and asks for me to relay her statement to the board. Good evening, I am writing to you not only as a concerned business owner, but also as a dedicated member of our Plymouth community. My business, Sukasa, is situated in the heart of our town's family-oriented downtown area, a location that is cherished for its accessibility and welcoming atmosphere. Unfortunately, a pressing issue has arisen that threatens the integrity of our beloved downtown and, if left unaddressed, could have long-lasting negative impacts on the vibrancy and safety of our community. Over the past several months, a group of individuals with vehicles equipped with excessively loud exhaust systems have been using the Russell Street parking garage as their regular gathering spot. Their activities marked by disruptive noise levels and inconsiderate behavior have become a significant source of discomfort and intimidation for both my employees and customers. This has exacerbated an already challenging parking situation, deterring patrons from visiting our downtown area and consequently affecting the livelihoods of local businesses. Our town is at a critical juncture in its effort to enhance the downtown area, striving to create a more inviting and family-friendly environment. The presence of this group in the parking garage, however, is in stark contrast to our community's values and the vision we all share for the thriving, inclusive downtown. The feedback I have received from customers frequently cites parking difficulties, with the activities of this group being a notable deterrent. I urge the Board of Selectmen to take immediate action to address the situation. By implementing measures to prevent the misuse of the parking garage, we can protect the safety and well-being of our residents and visitors, support the growth and success of local businesses, and further our town's goals of revitalization and improvement. Possible solutions could include enhanced surveillance, increased patrols by law enforcement in the area, and the establishment of clear guidelines for the use of public spaces, including the parking garage. These actions would significantly contribute to restoring the parking garage as a safe and welcoming place for all community members. Thank you for considering my concerns and for your ongoing commitment to the betterment of our community. I look forward to your prompt response and to seeing positive changes that will reinforce the welcoming nature of our town. Sincerely, Erin Murphy and Nick Crosby, Sukasa. So I, I guess, in closing, I would like to say that our kitchen windows look out onto the parking garage. And last Friday, I made a phone call. We had stopped calling because we didn't, we didn't want to be a nuisance, you know? We're, the police have difficult jobs and we don't want to be bothering them, but now we're at the point where we cannot go through another summer like we had last year. And I am serious, I invite any of you to come to my home on a Friday or Saturday and sit in my kitchen and to truly understand how it's, it's not only annoying, disruptive. I have anxiety over this now. I hear them coming and it begins. And it, the police, they are responsive. I make a phone call, on Friday, I called twice, once at 1:30 in the afternoon and once around 10:00. And I apologized to the dispatcher and said, I appreciate the response, the police have been fabulous, two, three cruises will come. But then they, they leave and they, they come back, and I have implemented the use of earplugs so I can sleep, and it's still noisy, I can still hear it. I have a little crystal hanging on my kitchen window, which was tap, 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 tap. That is the, the extent of that noise from across the street to my kitchen window. I can feel it, you, I mean, I'm sure everybody's familiar with loud booming noises, how you can actually feel it in your body. That's what's happening. And I want to have some, I want it to go, it's, it's got to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Pacella, 30 Russell Street. Thank you for letting me express my concerns on this matter. I can't, I don't want to pile on, because it's all the same stuff that we've been hearing, but I do want to be here to reinforce exactly what is going on, because it is pretty serious. As Anne had mentioned, we have a front row seat to what's going on across the street. So we're seeing everything. Our kitchen windows face right there, our living room windows face right there, and the bedroom windows upstairs, same thing. We're, we're looking at this, and you've got these young people, predominantly male, using the covered garage as their hangout spot, generally on the far right side, where, you know, if you're running by, you're not going to see them. But there's usually a number of them in there when they come. They come at, regularly, as she says, two, maybe one, two, three times a day. They get moved out, they come back in, and most of these participants arrive with these automobiles, with the enhanced exhausts, or they have the contraptions they put in their, their tailpipes to, to make the sounds louder, you know, like a, like a race car of sorts. And then when they pull into that garage, they speed up through, to the other end to make the sounds louder. Then they come around, come back down speeding up, then come back up, and they do that about twice. So they speed up, let the, let the accelerator off, and then you get that popping and banging noise in the back end. And this just reverberates out of that, out of that garage area. They totally understand that this is, I mean, they do it to make these loud noises. And they're there, doing it with these cars because of that echoing that, that reverberates out, and of course comes off to, because we're one of the closest ones, there are other neighbors too, and we've talked to the neighbors, they all are hearing it. Also, and as I say, and then they're, they're, once they, once they've arrived, they will quiet down as far as the cars go, and then they're hanging out, doing whatever they do in the corners. Sometimes there's skateboarders there, which is another sort of antagonizing sound. They hear skateboarders going back and forth from across the way. Most of these cars are, are, they're not junk cars, they're money cars, you know? They're BMWs, Jeeps, SUVs, pickup trucks, all with some kind of enhancement onto their exhaust systems. Have no consideration and respect for the surrounding homes or families. Very, very intimidating to go, to be across the street from them. Or if, I would never park my, my car in there, just because of the way they, I mean, I see the way they act, so I would never, who knows what would happen to your car in there? Or if you were coming back and somebody was running around in a circle in there? You know, it's just become, it can become a dangerous kind of place. So you got personal, personal safety and automobile safely, safety. Plus, they're taking up parking spaces. So not only are they chasing people away, but they're using their parking spaces, not what I think that the parking area is supposed to be. Police Department, I can't say enough, when we call, they come, and they do disperse it. Actually, we even had, we were walking last summer, because we had this issue, issue going back to then, since then. And we ran into a couple of police officers who were in a, in a car, you know, just waiting. So we went up and said hello and whatnot, and talked to them a little bit, and they, we were telling them about that, our situation, says, "Oh yeah, we know all about that." Says, "We're chasing them all over town." Says, "But, you know, we give them a ticket, they pay it, and they just keep on coming back." They said also, another thing we have an issue with is when we arrive after a call, they scoot out before we get there. So they're thinking they probably have a police scanner or something. And we, we witnessed this. You know, we call, if we call the, the police, and they come, all of a sudden, there's nobody there, because they've all left, because they somehow know that the police are coming. One thing, another thing is, I believe that the garage has cameras in it. Matter of fact, I know there are cameras, I just don't know if they operate, or if anybody ever looks at it. But I'm, I mean, just going back and seeing what goes on, you know, just if you could review that, you could see the mayhem that goes on in that, in that garage. Now, I can only, we can only speak for the garage, because we're there, and we see it on a regular basis, and we're probably more affected than practically anybody else. But, but the, the, the loitering in there is, is definitely an issue. And, you know, I think it hurts not just us, but I think it hurts anybody in the downtown area who wants to use this, this area to park. And one, one other thing is, over the weekend, we had, saw a, a police car up on the upper deck for a while, staying there, and says, "That's fantastic. Just, just a little bit of a presence could possibly just keep people, you know, out of these areas." So I want to thank you again, and hopefully we get this thing done.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Will Fitzgerald, I'm a resident of 38 Russell Street. I eat at Sukasa a lot, know Erin and Dick well, and neighbors with these fine folks. I have heard the loud noises from the cars on several occasions, very late at night, which is frustrating, because my wife and I both work, and, you know, we're up very early in the morning, so a good night of sleep is very, very, very important. I haven't called the police myself, because I didn't realize that it was happening in the garage. It sounded like it was coming all the way from Court Street. So I assumed that, you know, they'd just be doing laps, and, you know, the police wouldn't be able to, to do anything about it. But if it's confined to a very specific area, I'd, personally, I'd be in favor of, you know, a solution that at least made this area more fit for the purpose in which it was originally designed. Thank you.
Desmond? Go ahead.
The, our neighbors across the street on Russell Street, they emailed a statement to, I think, Virginia Flynn. And I'm not sure if you received the email from Mike Askins on Russell Street. He, he sent me a copy of it. And also Nina Peters, whose mother owns the house right here to our right, 17th South Russell Street. And her tenants are also fed up. Thank you.
Thank you. Desmond?
Hello, good evening. Desmond Egan, Director of Park Plymouth. I'm here and talking in capacity of the complaints that we've expressed, have been expressed to us about what we call the Water, Water, excuse me, Water One Parking Lot, which is across from Lothir Street. We have a lot of residents, local residents complaining about large gathering of people in that area, noise. We know firsthand that following mornings, we have considerable amount of litter and garbage in that area, because there's not, you know, after those people have left. That seemed to be one of the big problem areas that we experienced for the litter, because of some of the congregation that goes on in that area. It's usually late in the evening, where the Park Plymouth kind of hours are expired, so we direct them to the police for their, their issues. We do try to address them if they do happen in the afternoon, but we kind of limit it in our capacity of what we can do. So again, the reference there. Again, we're trying to make a concerted effort to have businesses have their employees park at the parking deck. Some of the stuff that's been expressed to us is their safety concerns related to going up to the parking deck. And we know firsthand, we've heard the same complaints about, and we know firsthand, there are several, let's call them car enthusiasts, who are there. There are usually about five or six different cars in that area, seem to be kind of regulars there. It's come to a point where we've put a garbage can in the parking lot to help, you know, to help at least give them an area to deposit some of the litter that's associated with that. But it has been expressed to us, some of the loudness there. Again, our capacity is limited, and how we can do it is after hours, it's off-season for us, so there is no part, paid parking to enforce. We've heard complaints and seen firsthand, there has been skateboarding there as well. Some large groups of high school kids at different times, or what seems to be the high school kids in the parking lot, after-school hours. So all this has been contributing to concerns related to using the parking deck after hours. We've reduced the rate from $1 to, an hour to $5 all day, to try to make it more attractive to people coming to downtown, as a lower price point for them. We also offer a limited permit to that area, to kind of make it more attractive for people to do. But we still have that hurdle of trying to get people up there, because of their, some of their security concerns related there. So I just wanted to express what we've heard from local residents about that parking area to you guys.
Desmond, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Just to make it real clear, these folks that are violating, getting complaints on, they're not permit parkers, they're not paid parkers, right? So they don't, they don't, they have no business being in these parking lots.
To the best my knowledge, no. Yeah, it would appear that they're just outside their vehicles. It's like, after seven, we don't charge for parking, so there's not a need to pay for parking. But it seems like they're just in that immediate area, from what we're getting expressed.
So back to the, let's go back to the garage. Have you seen the skateboarders? Because I know I have.
Yes.
Seen them on the ledges. And liability there, if somebody breaks an ankle, we're liable, the town is liable. So they don't belong, they're doing that, that's what the skate park is for. That's why we built the skate park.
Yep.
Like, there's really not, there's not a lot to do, there's not a lot we can do without a loiter, without a loitering ban. That will help with the skateboarders, too, direct them down to the skateboard park.
Yep.
So...
We've had fire extinguishers that were discharged in there that we've had to replace. There was some fencing that was disrupted and stuff like that.
When we built the garage, because I was on the PGDC, we, we put, there's cameras in there.
Correct.
Are we using the cameras? Are we, are we able, when you, did you have some damage to the charges, too? The EV charges?
Well, it's, the EV charges are across this thing, but they have not been disrupted. They're in the open-air lot across the way, but...
So the fire extingu, whatever, did, did you look at the video to try and identify what was?
I believe there was someone identified and addressed with that.
So the same thing, we can look at video.
Yes.
And identify some of these perpetrators and...
Yep, the feed is fed into Town Hall. Park Plymouth doesn't have immediate access to it, but the police and I believe Town Hall would have access to those cameras.
PD does, okay. So that's something we should start utilizing if we get complaints late at night, and they're gone. At least try and identify who they are. The one car they're talking about, I've seen that car, you can't read the plate. He's come in when I'm coming from a meeting. Just rips around, I've seen it, and then you go look for him, he's gone. And then you look at his plate, and you can't read it.
Yep.
So I've seen him five times, six times, myself, so...
Yeah. Yeah, they're like, they're there throughout different parts of the day.
So you agreed that we need this, you think this loitering is something that we desperately need?
From the perspective of some of the residents and business concerns, and in turn it is for people using the lot, yes.
Right, okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment, if I, if I may. We listened to Mr. Fay, present to the board today, quarter of a million dollars for, for our parks. You know, can't say enough about that. The town has bylaws in place that allow us to take preemptive action before problems occur in our parks. All I'm asking the board to do is give me this, a similar tool to take preemptive action before there's a problem, or a concern, or complaint from a good citizen in other, at other town locations as well. That's all I'm asking for. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman? Just, just for the record, this bylaw was brought forward as a proposed bylaw a few weeks back. Clearly, from that conversation, this is new for all five of you to understand, get a better sense of. During that conversation, it was very clear to me that Selectman Bletzer was for it, and Selectman Canty was against it, with his concerns. And so I want you all to know that I encouraged the chief and Attorney McKay to reach out to those two, Selectmen in particular, to try to come up with a proposal that we could discuss this evening, so it wasn't hotly debated. So this is what we always do with anything. We try to work with Selectmen in between meetings to make sure that anything that we bring forward can be consumed by the Nalaja group. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Excuse me?
No.
No, thank you. Which is the wish of the board?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve the bylaw as written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Helm, motion by Mr. Bletzer, discussion, Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Brindisi. I, I appreciated the opportunity to meet with the chief in advance of this hearing, and to discuss it with him. As a result of the discussion at that time, he did send out that, that email, which I've obviously distributed to members of the board, and I will give to Ginny, so it's in the meeting minutes, since it is a document that's being used at the hearing. At the time, after that meeting, the chief had expressed that he would like to add to the discussion scheduled for tonight, the possibility of restricting parking during time limits at the, at that time, the Copper Cove lot, because at the time of that meeting, there was not a mentioned issue with the parking lot, the parking garage, rather, right outside of this building. The stated reason being is that this, according to the chief, would address the issue at the problem location, without adversely affecting other locations that rely upon the lots for their businesses, take the subjectivity out of the decision-making process, thereby reducing the risk of liability to the officer, the department, and the town. It would allow for us to ensure we have tried other and less drastic options, and would give the officers the ability to again utilize less drastic measures of enforcement, including parking citations, towing, or citations for motor vehicle trespass. So I, obviously, the chief's opinion has changed somewhat since Friday, which, you know, that's, that's certainly within his purview. He's the chief of the police, and he can choose to make any decisions that he so chooses. But the way that the law, the bylaw is written, is a, is, in according, and I agree with the chief's earlier statement, a drastic option. It applies to all streets, all sidewalks, all parking lots. It allows any, anyone to call up and say that they are being alarmed, that they are being annoyed. It involves a tremendous amount of subjectivity. We saw, at the last town meeting, a proposed nuisance bylaw, and I referenced this at the last hearing, that was designed, and we all knew, all the five of us knew, that was primarily designed to address things like births, things like the full sale, things like the Court Street crater, things like that house on South Street that's been boarded up for like 10 years, and has no trespassing signs on it. But when it went to town meeting, it was viewed as something that was neighbor against neighbor because of some other language in it, about overgrowth, and about, people were concerned about their lawns, and if they had wildflowers on their lawns, and yada, yada, yada. And here we are, six months later, seemingly having learned little from that experience, again with a broad-reaching solution to a discrete problem. I have been at meetings in this room. I was in a meeting last week on Wednesday, the FinCom meeting, where those cars were driving past this built, this room at that time. So I agree that there are some issues with that type of behavior. I'm not endorsing that type of behavior. I'm not endorsing the behavior that is being reflected by those, the lots by Copper Cove either. I am saying that the proposed solution is a broad stroke when instead, a more tailored solution should be tried. That is a lot that the town has a lot of control and influence over. The lots over by Copper Cove could have a less restrictive option tried. And if that doesn't work, then we can make a credible case to town meeting, "Hey, we tried something less restrictive at these known problem areas, and it didn't work. That's why we're looking for this type of nuisance bylaw." Because I predict that this is the type of nuisance bylaw that is going to be seen as being pulled from another community, just like the nuisance bylaw was, this loitering bylaw, will be seen as being pulled from another community that isn't reflective of the circumstances in Plymouth. It's too broad of a stroke, and it's overreach, and it creates that neighbor-versus-neighbor mentality that we were trying to avoid. I also see procedural issues with it, in terms of a two-step process was outlined by Town Council, but it's not present in the bylaw. I just, I don't think we can support... I just, I don't think we can support, I can't, I'll leave my colleagues to make their own decisions. But I don't think we should support something just because it's almost town meeting time again and we have to sign the warrant tonight. I think instead, we should be creating bylaws and other solutions in town that actually address the issue properly and then respond to whatever that, that addressment was and whether it worked or not and iterate from there, rather than once again rushing with bylaw language that we once again got at the last moment here and we're being asked to sign off it and pass it on to town meeting and it's going to have all of our names on it. I just think that's irresponsible. I also have, will say, from my day job, I have seen bylaws like this with similar or the same text be applied in other communities in ways that have had a disparate impact on poor people, on young people, and on minority individuals. And this is a community, obviously this is a community that is overwhelmingly white, but there are non-white people here. This is a community that's relatively middle-class, but there's lots of disadvantaged people here. This is a community where there's a lot of people under the age of 21 that want somewhere to go, that don't want to hang out at their parents' house and they need somewhere to go. None of the solutions to any of those problems is being proposed, just a solution that would seek to penalize people in certain situations based on the influence of certain neighbors and whether they feel that they are being annoyed or alarmed. I underst, I think there are legitimate concerns about some of the issues that are being brought up here, but I think, again, this is an overbroad solution. We should be trying to tailor something towards the specific areas of town where there are these issues happening and addressing them. Things like over loud exhaust can be regulated by the police just like over tinting your windows can be regulated by the police. You don't need a nuisance bylaw to do that. And also being in a, those cars are going in and out of that parking lot. I don't see how loitering would even be applicable to some of that conduct. I agree it should be addressed. I don't think this is the way to address it and I think it will have a disparate impact on certain folks and open the town up to significant liability because even if you're going to lose a lawsuit, it still costs the town money to fight it. So for all those reasons, I will be voting no on this. I look forward to alternative solutions to address some of these known issues and I encourage my colleagues to consider seeking those solutions before going with this one. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'm going to support the bylaw for a number of reasons. One must mean it's coming from the police chief and they need tools to manage the lots. I don't know, I understand some of your concerns, but in my eyes, it doesn't matter your color, your age, or anything else, your gender if you want. If you're blaring music in a, in a garage, it really doesn't matter. You need to go home and, and put it in your yard and play it for your parents. That's what you need to do. You don't know how aggravated I get sitting in my living room, watching television and I can't even hear it because they're going by and they're playing music so loud. There's no need of it. And as far as the noise that you brought up earlier, we had this conversation a few years back. They need some kind of meter and to check the noise volumes on, on exhaust and stuff. Otherwise they can't enforce that either and I don't think we even have that. So I know there's an issue here. I know Park Plymouth, I'm sitting on the board for, I think it was 12 years. They supervise till seven at night and it's done and it's seasonal. Closing parking garages at nine or parking spots, I'll never support that one. What are you going to go out to eat till seven and then come out, move your car and, and go back and have your dessert? I mean, it's, you know, there's, there's liability, I agree with you, there's liability with everything. But as this gentleman, Desmond, will tell you, they give out thousands of tickets, I'm assuming, I haven't been on the board in years, or hundreds if you will. And some get appealed and, and that's it. I've never seen, to my knowledge, anybody that got a ticket through the PGDC or the town. I mean, is it language perfect? Maybe it's not. But you know what, we can ask 50 different lawyers and get 50 different answers. I'm sorry, no offense. But that's how I, that's how I roll in the free world and I, and I believe it's true. So that being said, I would like to make one little comment here, one more for the road. And that's, Desmond, I, you know, I don't know what the chief has for manpower, if you will, or shift power, but maybe PGDC could find it in their heart somewhere to maybe give him some funding if you guys talked and thought that was a good idea. And have him, have somebody that's dedicated to the parking things. And if that means you having to put your meter price up down on the, whatever street that is, then so be it. I'm not looking to hurt your, your organization either, but I think it warrants discussion, at least for the present situation. Like you heard the neighbors say, the cruiser was there. And you know, what I'm afraid of, to be honest with you, and I'm sure he is, we have four cruisers over here or two here, two down or three down on Water Street and somebody's in a bad accident or there's a robbery going down on the other end of town. That's when it's going to be a real lawsuit. So let's try it. I'm going to vote for it and I don't want to go on all night. I know everybody's tired, so. Mr. Helm?
I wasn't going to say anything because I thought Mr. Bletzer said all that I need, I wanted to say and you certainly did as well, Mr. Chairman. But I'm going to support this because what we've heard tonight is just from some residents from downtown. But I will tell you, and I'm not going to specify my neighborhood, we have the same problem. This problem is all over Plymouth. It isn't just downtown. It's everywhere. And I can tell you, when we have this bylaw in place, and I do believe town meeting will support it because I think they will understand the difference between this and the blighted property bylaw. And, and the, and enough of the residents around town have experienced this kind of behavior in their neighborhoods that we're gonna, it's gonna, it isn't just going to be downtown. And, you know, I, I feel good that my neighbors will now have the ability and know that they have the ability to call the police when this is happening in their neighborhood because there is a bylaw, that the police have a bylaw. This is why I'm going to support it. Is it perfect? Of course it's not perfect. Nothing we ever do in this town is perfect. But it's, it's good and it needs to be done and it's time. We've ignored this problem for way too long in this town and the residents have had it. And we have to act and now is the time to act. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Bletzer?
No more, I'm, I've said enough.
No, we're voting, Charlie.
Absolutely, absolutely voting for yes for this bylaw that should have happened years ago.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
No.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Four to one and Mr. Canty in opposition. Home rule petition for spring special town meeting, additional alcohol licenses, Article 12.
Good evening again. I'm going to speak about the home rule petition. I think at our last interaction, it was presented as three additional licenses. I think there was a request to drop it to two additional licenses. The language would be two additional licenses. It would be limited to the precincts that had been identified. I think they were precincts nine, 16, and 17. I mentioned I had consulted with the ABCC and the petition was allowable. It was able to be brought before the citizens had put on the warrant. And I think at this point, I defer to Selectman Bletzer to continue.
Thank you, Attorney McKay. So this, this, this by, this homo petition was, was, it came to me. I got a lot of requests from southwest Plymouth, down there, the Red Brook area, for, for a liquor store and they, they, they had none down there. And I found that we were losing, I know some people, I know a lot of people live down there. We were, they were going to Wareham and Bourne, other towns and, and so we were losing revenue. So I looked at, we took a look, I sat with you and with Lisa Johnson, Lee Hartman, and we looked at a map of precincts because we, we wanted to, when we were coming up with this homo petition to get, I wanted three licenses just to have, just in case. But two makes more sense now. But we looked at the, all the liquor stores where you could see 16, 17, and nine were, were wide open. And looking, looking closer and that there's really nothing in 16, you know, that, that you could put. There's no commercial, no retail development there. There is a spot in nine, the campground down there, and then Red Brook is got a, is a village similar to Pine Hills. That's what they're doing now. And that would be appropriate for a license if somebody, you know, applied for it. So going to town meeting, you know, Selectman Cant, Canty went to 17 and had a lot of questions. But I got an email from somebody from 16 and I actually talked to him today and about that they're, they're concerned in 16. They, they don't mind going to Pine Hills or, they really don't want it. I think their fear is that if, if there's a license available, that, that we're, we're going to create a strip wall down there just to put a liquor store, which, which, you know. So they, they, 16 doesn't want it. So I, I want to amend this bylaw tonight with the, hopefully with the board's approval to take 16 out of this. I'd like to have precinct 17 and precinct nine is, is the locations. And the reason why we, again, we talked about specific locations, because we want it to be like that because we don't want somebody to get a license and then two years from now trying to sell a license to Walmart or to somebody in North Plymouth or, or a different part of town. We want it to stay in, in that area of Plymouth because that's where the growth, that's where our growth is going, you know, being a town of 106 square miles. When you look at where the license is now, it's where the population was 20 years ago. So now, when you look where we want to put them, that's where all the new growth is going. So that's the reason for this, this, this homo petition for two licenses. It's, it's economic development and it's a service to our residents. It saves them. You know, I, I was here and I can get my beer and wine at the Little Sandy Pond. And by the way, I visited that store. It's, it's really a good, good, well-run store. But now I got to go from there to Cedarville or I just go to Wareham and I get everything. So, so it's for economic development and it's a service to our residents. So I, to me, it's a, it's a no-brainer and I hope that my board agrees and I hope we can get this through town meeting. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? So.
I'm making the motion to amend this.
Right, so we're going from, thank you. We're going from two to one now?
No, no. No, two, we're going still two licenses, but only two precincts. We're taking precinct 16 out.
Oh, all right, okay.
We want to take 16 out. There's, there's been pushback and they're, I've been told they don't want another license, anything in 16. So it, it, there's, there's really no, nothing there that, there's no retail areas there that, that you could put a license anywhere at this point. And I told them that we're thinking about the future, but.
Well.
I, I think once these licenses are gone, they're gone, so.
Well, so we have the final say, so if.
Right, no.
If you apply for the number you're looking for and then they're going to fill out applications and we say yes or.
No, they'll go through the process.
And we say yes or no, so I. I mean, I, I would like to see the, the amount of licenses stay the same and.
The licenses are staying at two. The licenses are staying at two.
Okay.
But the areas, we're, we're taking 16, precinct 16 out of this, this petition.
Mr. Canty?
So I would make a motion that we recommend to town meeting and include in the warrant this article except excising any reference to precinct 16 from the geographical restriction. So it would be as presented, but not including precinct 16, which is consistent with what Selectman Bletzer is trying to effectuate.
So I made the motion.
John.
John did, I didn't, John, I'm sorry.
So, but I made the motion, right?
Technically I did, but I did it consistent with what you'd like.
Okay, that's fine. I just, as long as it, as long as we get it done, so.
So a motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Mahoney, discussion. Mr. Bletzer?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, Ms. McKay.
Thank you.
And I wasn't including you in with the 50 lawyers because you're like 51. Alrighty, execute 2024 special town meeting warrant.
I move we execute the 2024 special town meeting warrant.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Helm, second by Mr. Bletzer, discussion. See you none, Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Bletzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Execute 2024 annual town meeting warrant.
I move we execute, we vote to execute the 2024 annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Helm, second by Mr. Bletzer, discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Bletzer?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Unanimous. Anyone wishing to speak on the public comment? Please identify yourself for the record and make sure the green light's on, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening again, gentlemen. Will Fitzgerald, 38 Russell Street. I'm the founder of Rescue Plymouth Wildlife. RPW is a coalition of individuals and organizations committed to raising awareness about the harms rat poisons currently used in Plymouth pose to our natural heritage. We've partnered with Mass Audubon and others on this issue and we're looking for the town's help. We'd like to get data from the DPW concerning the amount of rat poisons used on town property, including bait locations, active ingredients, and concentrations. The term second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides, or ESKRs, refers to four chemicals that have been implicated in the deaths of wildlife across the Commonwealth, including birds of prey. Pest management professionals use these chemicals to target rats and other rodents. They kill rodents by interfering with their blood's ability to clot. The rodents consume the bait, leave, and suffer over a period of several days before succumbing to a lethal hemorrhage brought on by a scratch, sneeze, or cough. During this time, they can become prey for other wildlife, spreading the poison's effects throughout the local ecosystem. A 2017 study by Tufts University found that 95% of birds of prey admitted to a local wildlife center had ESKRs in their tissues. Nearly a year ago today, the town of Arlington lost the first female bald eagle to nest there in over 60 years due to ESKR poisoning. A similar fate could await the several nesting bald eagles in Plymouth unless we create a more sustainable solution. Folks can learn more by joining our kickoff meeting with Mass Audubon at Plymouth Public Library on the 10th of April. They can also visit our website, rescueplymouthwildlife.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lynn, is there anybody online? No. Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment?
Do we have the town manager's report?
I'm sorry, we do. Is that right?
Okay, just a few updates. As you all know, about a year ago, we had issued an RFP for the Sims House. During that process, unfortunately, we did not have any respondents to take over or want to lease that property. And then, and during the wintertime, we had that very deep freeze that unfortunately damaged the inside of the Sims House. So we've spent the past six months repairing the water damage from that deep freeze. We are now ready to reissue the RFP. The goal would be to try to find a nonprofit organization that's willing to lease the property and manage it and maintain it over a period of time. So I would expect in the next 30 days, we will be ready to come before the board with this RFP. this RFP, so that we can issue that publicly. So I'll keep you posted on that. Unfortunately, you know, working with the Commission of Health and Human Services today, she informed me that we have approximately 61 tobacco retailers here in town, and the state conducts annual youth access checks on these tobacco retailers. And they conducted, most recently, 45 checks, and 40% of those 45 violated the state law, meaning they were caught selling to, selling tobacco products to minors. Right now, as you know, the age to buy tobacco products went from 18 to age 21 about four years ago now, and there are very strict penalties involved on this sale to minors. The first offense is $1,000, the second offense is $2,000, the third offense is $5,000, and then a fourth offense, you can have your tobacco license revoked. So one of the, within the 40%, met that threshold, and there'll be a handling with the Board of Health to potentially revoke that license for that tobacco retailer. Moving on to some public works updates, the Hall Street and Liberty Street four-way stop has been installed. For those of you who have driven in that intersection, you'll notice that the four-way, the stop signs are bagged. The DPW director has instructed the, the message boards to be put out there as of last week, just notifying the folks that typically go through there that there'll be these four-way stops, and so folks need to be aware of those in the future. We expect, starting this coming Thursday, to remove those bags Thursday afternoon, and then until, obviously, Friday morning, we will have a police officer just at that intersection with the lights on, just as another warning that folks need to pay attention to the new signals. So we'll keep you posted on that, but, you know, folks were very concerned about that intersection, so we are progressing in that area. Some good news on the Water Street project. I pointed out last week that we had, that they had, the Northern Construction had installed some water, some sewer mains as of last week. As of the end of this week, 300 new feet of sewer main will be complete, which amounts about 60% of the total project completed. So we have approximately about 450 feet remaining. So just, what, you know, if you put that in comparison, they started this last 300 feet about six weeks ago, so they've already completed 300 feet. So assuming things progress the way they have, we definitely think that we will meet that June 30th date, and hopefully much earlier before June 30th as well. So, again, that project, that project is going extremely well now. The finance office will be releasing the motor vehicle excise bills this coming week, and then they have, as I mentioned last week, you can now pay your excise bills online, and there's an insert in the excise bills instructing folks how to use that new payment portal. You can also go online, as of today, and purchase beach stickers. So again, beach stickers can only be purchased online right now. We'll start the in-person acquisitions in May. Just as another reminder, early voting has already started. We will continue early voting for the remainder of this week during town hall hours, and then next Tuesday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., we will open our polling locations for the primaries. And so because, because of the election next Tuesday, obviously, we will, we will not be meeting here in select vote session. And then I just wanted to remind folks, I know Mr. Coyle, our DPW director, already mentioned this, but just as another reminder, March 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., town meeting members are invited to tour 22 Mary B. Lane. In addition to that, we also would love to show them the existing conditions over at the existing buildings, so they can get a good understanding as to why we think this is an important acquisition. So we're going to try to model it more like an open house, so we'll have folks at all the different buildings, so town meeting members can come inside and get a briefing on the current conditions and the proposed new acquisition. So again, pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for the town manager? No? New business? I just want to remind everybody that the poll will plunge Saturday. Derek, are you plunging this year?
I am not plunging this year. I will be at my national guard duties this weekend.
Oh.
Very convenient. It works out very well for me this year.
No.
It's going to be good weather, though, I think, so for those of you that want to plunge...
Yeah, it is, actually, this week is nice.
I will support all my board members who would love to plunge this, this weekend.
What's Avila's about? So if you haven't got your sign-up sheets, we didn't see Jordan the Bear, but I guess he's busy to remind us.
I didn't see them today.
Anything on the letters? Or business? I will do a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for watching, have a good week.